Two o'clock.
Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remade standing for opening remarks by Vice President Benny Palermo.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to welcome everybody here on Tuesday, and I thought it very fitting with the current climate in our country, state, and of course, our city, that I would read a quote that I found from Ruth Bader Ginsburg. RBG said, "Real change enduring change happens one step at a time. Fight for the things you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to follow." Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or mute all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the 2021-2026 Capital Improvement Program. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Items seven and eight relate to the same project and can be considered together for smelter plant replat two located northwest of I-480 at the Missouri River. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone this property from HI District to CBD District. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for smelter plant replat two.
Public hearing on items seven and eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Chris Kinnig, HDR, 1917 South 67th Street, on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Do I speak now?
Name and address, sir.
Lee Myers, 105 South 9th Street, number 603. Proponent with a question. I can't tell how Riverfront Drive connects with the city. It looks like it's rerouted, but Eighth Street right now has four major streets dump onto it: Harney, Farnham, Douglas, and Capital. And all the cement of Eighth Street is poured, and there's one lane that goes east. Is that just going to be one lane taking traffic into the Riverfront? At one time when they sold this project, they were talking about bridging Capital down to Riverfront Drive. But having those four major streets dump into a one lane going east seems strange, but you can't tell from the drawings what else is going on.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Mr. Kinnig, you wish to come up to the mic, please.
Yes, sir. So what the plan is, is that Riverfront-
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris Kinnig, 1917 South 67th Street.
Thank you.
So what the plan is, is that there will be, Riverfront Drive will be a two-lane road that'll come through Lewis and Clark Landing, and then it'll cross underneath the, it'll cross underneath I-480 and across railroad tracks and be aligned with Douglas Street Extension. So Douglas Street will be, if you're coming east on Douglas Street, you'll be able to continue straight across the street into Hartland America Park, and then continue on up through Lewis and Clark Landing, and continue on north. And then Eighth Street will be a two-lane, east, north-south, and then Farnham Street again will connect back into Eighth. And then eventually with the Heinz Development, that'll also continue on to the south.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven and eight are approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2106 Pappleton Avenue from GI District to R-5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a PUD overlay district located northeast of 192nd and 11 North Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for property located at 1120 North 20th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District to DS District. Item 12, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI-1 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing on items 11 and 12 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Darren Smith, RTICON Development, 509 Walker, Woodbine, Iowa, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 and 12 are approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Blue Chip Ultra Lounge located at 14805 West Maple Road.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Sarah Innes, 13505 Marin industry, Omaha, Nebraska, 681.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call. Oh, Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I, one time I know you from Coen and Kelly's. Just give me a reason why you should go to the Blue Chip. I, what, is that a different type of place?
It is. It's actually an ultra lounge in west Omaha, so it's more catered to the upscale sports lounge versus the hole-in-the-wall bar.
Okay, so I have been going to the hole-in-the-wall a long time, huh?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. But we do have CCs, so don't worry.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Items 14 and 15 can be considered together, applications to consider Class I liquor licenses for the Orpheum Theater located at 409 South 16th Street and the Holland Performing Arts Center located at 1200 Douglas Street.
The public hearing on items 14 and 15 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, President, Councilmembers, Ryan Ricky, on behalf of the applicant-
Mr. Ruby, would you do me a favor? Lower the mic. We're having a problem with the volumes. Let's see if that works better.
Right. Ryan Ricky, 409 South 17th Street, on behalf of the applicant, Omaha Performing Arts Center. And I have with me Arnold Reeves. We're happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, an application to consider a Class K liquor license for Maloney's located at 1830 North 72nd Street.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Jordan Ellis, 7076 Spencer Street, Omaha, 68104.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 17 through 25 were held on September 22, 2020. We're pulling 25 off. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
What's the pleasure of the council on item 25? Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Yep. To make a, a brief amendment or a short amendment to this. And I think you have a copy of it. And we discussed this morning, and basically it is a practice we have been doing since almost day one, but we want to make sure it is in code. So if you take a look at, there are two sections. One is the review of the applications, like the 40 that we do allow each year. We usually get maybe three times that amount, but the 40 will be reviewed, and the city clerk shall send the planning department and the fire department the applications approved by the city council so far works committee, no later than the April the 30th. Like I say, these are, this is already established, but we do want to put it in writing. I ask you for that consideration.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. No further lights. The amendment. Roll call. On the amendment.
Palermo. Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Are there any further lights on the as amended? Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 26 through 32 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name and address, who you represent, if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 33, a resolution to approve the settlement agreement and release with Hawkins Construction Company in the amount of $150,000 related to the construction between 108th Street and Madison Street to Q Street.
The public hearing on item 33 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Nick Bader for Hawkins Construction Company, 2516 Deer Park Boulevard.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 34, an ordinance to approve a master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for 586 Axon body camera systems and TASER 7 CEW units for a period of five years for a total cost of $5,476,738.21.
Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 35, an ordinance approving a contract with Nebraska Land Recycling LLC in the amount of $2,282,800 for the Omaha Mixed Recyclables Processing 2021 to 2030 Package A Project, Ace Communication Opposition.
The public hearing on item 35 begins at this time. I've had a request for the Public Works and the mayor to present first, which I will accommodate. Mr. Tyler, you want to work your way down here? I'm sure the mayor's on her way. Here she is. Welcome, Madam Mayor. Your, your agenda item's up. Yes.
Good afternoon, council members. Jean Stottherd, 1819 Farnham, I'm the mayor of Omaha. The recycling contract before you today completes years of preparation for a long-term plan for solid waste and recycling collection and processing in the city of Omaha. I am confident in our recommendation of Nebraska Land Recycling. Nebraska Land offers a realistic and affordable price to Omaha taxpayers. The company offers the exact same service we currently receive from First Star Fiber for $1.3 million less than we pay today. I don't know how many of you have visited Nebraska Land facility, but I have. When I inspected the location, I observed that the drop site is protected by an awning roof and three-side enclosure. Our solid waste division and finance department have also been to Nebraska Land on several occasions. We have reviewed the operational plans and finances before making this recommendation. Nebraska Land's bid per price, per ton, is in line with prices around the country. Not low, not high, but reasonable in comparison. The financial review of Nebraska Land by our finance department shows a demonstrated ability to expand and manage the growth of their business. Nebraska Land will do the same work with greater efficiency. Mr. Brown will purchase one new conveyor belt before the contract begins, and that is all he needs. By comparison, another bidder, First Star Fiber acknowledges that it needs millions of dollars in capital improvements to its facility to handle this contract, which increased its bid price. Some of you question the structure of the contract developed by Public Works. The contract includes input from industry experts and a review by a consultant. The terms of this contract are set specifically to avoid the situation that we are in today, where the current provider comes back frequently asking for more money or isn't able to pay the city what they owe. We have protections for the city built into this proposed contract, including a bid bond for $2.3 million equivalent to one year of the contract. Nebraska Land is already responding to suggestions from neighbors, including litter control, noise, and traffic concerns. Our traffic analysis shows the increase in traffic in the neighborhood will be insignificant and will not propose a safety hazard. Mr. Brown is planning three recycling days and community cleanups. We are committed to recycling in Omaha that is at a price that is fair to our taxpayers. We don't want to be the city that pays one of the highest prices in the country for these services when we have the opportunity to do business with Nebraska Land at a fair and reasonable cost to our citizens. The bids we receive from First Star Fiber and Waste Management are far, far higher than prices that other cities pay. I urge you to support the recommendation of Public Works Department, the Finance Department, and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler, does Public Works wish to make a presentation?
Thank you, members of council. Jim Tyler, City of Omaha, Public Works, 1819 Farnham, speaking on behalf of the department on our recommendation for the award of the recycling processing contract for the 10-year period to Nebraska Land Recycling. So before I turn things over to Mr. Lance Brown, owner of Nebraska Land, I want to take a few minutes to make a few points and address some concern, concerns we heard this morning. In addition, I would like to take the opportunity to help separate some fact from fiction due to some misinformation or misleading information that is out there about Nebraska Land and their operations. First and foremost, we made this recommendation with confidence. Nebraska Land have addressed any concerns from our finance department. They thoroughly vetted Nebraska Land. The Public Works Department and the mayor's office fully are confident in this recommendation. They've addressed all of our concerns. They're in a strong position financially. They are an established and reputable business in the community. I'll, I'll take a moment here to address the concern. Mr. Harding, he did provide us a copy of his current lease. We just got it. I don't have a copy. We'll make sure you get a copy of that. We'll review it. We'll allow anyone to review a copy of that current lease. I'll allow for Mr. Brown to discuss any arrangements he has for lease acquisition of any property for additional space when, when he gets up to talk. To, to get to some facts. It's a fact, Nebraska Land has a detailed staffing plan and an equipment plan to handle the contract we have put, put before you. They have minimal improvements necessary to take on the additional work. They have a thorough and complete understanding of the industry, the logistics, and the end markets to be able to move the materials quickly into the marketplace. They are farther along than First Star Fiber was when they were awarded the first contract with the city of Omaha. Fact, there is no comparison to the solid waste contract, where we had a bid from a company that included half the cost and resources than three other bidders and an estimate from our consultant. In that case, failure would have led to trash on the streets and health and safety issues for our citizens. For this bid, a performance bond is in place to continue recycling in an unlikely event that the contract could not be fulfilled. At no time would there be materials on the curb. FCC would continue to collect recyclable materials from the curb in all instances. Some facts about traffic at the intersection, and others can elaborate on this, but we, we spent some time with our traffic department and Mr. Fitzher over the, the break between now and so. Traffic safety is not and will not be an issue. Our traffic engineer will provide information to the city council prior to the vote indicating that the small increase in traffic at the intersection of 42nd and D in comparison to the existing traffic will not result in any safety or traffic concerns. The intersection does not meet the warrants for signalization. And like I said, I'll allow for others, Mr. Fitzher, Mr. Reselman, to elaborate at now or at any time before the vote for any other information you need on that specific topic. I'm going to bring up some information about the terms of the contract, and I, I know that we, we, there's some issues on this, and I'll do my best to explain again. The terms of the contract were crafted in a way to provide assurances that we would not get into a situation where the provider was coming back to the city asking for more money or modifications to the contract. We worked with experts in the industry on these contract terms. That includes the recycling partnership and a review by an outside consultant. Two of the three bidders believe the terms to be extremely fair and structured in a way to get fair pricing for the city. This, and again, this will allow the city to avoid these messy terms we can get into with the current contract, where we have had issues of asking for additional payments. The contract is structured to avoid that and handle the ups and downs of the marketplace. I, I'd like to express some, where I believe is, some potentially misleading information that's been shared to members of the council either through concerned citizens or, or others. We, we understand that there's some information out there that discusses the amount of recyclable material that may go to a landfill with Mr. Brown's operations. And, you know, that, that information, I, I would like to let Mr. Brown explain why that's completely incorrect and false, how he will be providing for getting to the end markets every material in the current contract, same as First Star. Okay? And, and so if you're getting that information, please listen to the facts and don't take the information you are getting for granted. Look into the details of that information. If we're looking at recycling glass, we're not, we're not recycling that as a part of our contract anyway. So if that's being included as this is something that we should be considering as we're looking at how much money is going to a landfill, that has nothing to do with the current contract at hand. That's handled through our work with Ripple. We did not, as I stated this morning, get an independent review of the current and proposed operations at the Nebraska Land facility. We did seek, as I stated previously, assistance in a review of the bid prices from around the country, which provided to us a clear indication that the price we received from the Nebraska Land was fair and in comparison to other prices from around the country. We also, as I said, sought expert, experts to help us craft the terms of the contract, which allowed us to get a fair price and competition. We got three bids. That's what we wanted. We wanted competition so we could assess the market and see if we were getting a fair price. In short, in my opinion, it would be horribly unjust for us to recommend anyone besides Nebraska Land for the contract before you. I understand that you have concerns. That's your right, that's your job, and I commend you for looking out for the citizens throughout this process. As you are doing this, please allow for myself and others that understand the facts to get the, the information that you need to make an informed choice of how you vote on this contract before you. Now, I've not spent a lot of time talking about why you should hire Nebraska Land. I'm here for question, I will be here for any questions that you may have, but now I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Lance Brown, owner of Nebraska Land, who I'm very excited to work with to allow for him to speak on behalf of his company and discuss his company's commitment to the city for the award of this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Name and address. Lance Brown, 2041 South 195th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
All right. Just want to start off by saying thank you, council members, for your time. We are extremely excited to be recommended for the award for the recycling processing contract. Kind of see it as a new chapter here in Omaha, a little bit different than the last 20 years. You've got a new hauler coming in that you can depend on. You're going to have a new processor possibly that you can depend on. And all of our goals are kind of the same. I mean, when it comes to recycling, you want to improve the efforts in the community and, but you can't have it at a price tag that would be detrimental to the cause of people wanting to recycle. So I believe that we've done an excellent job setting out a clear, simple plan to accomplish the goal that's in the contract, and that is to receive the product, process the product, and get it to the end markets. and get it to the end markets. We can all assume that there are going to be some opinions provided today that won't favor a change, but that's why I'm here to kind of answer any of those questions and opinions with facts and data points that may clear up some of that misinformation. I've provided you all a letter of statement and letters of recommendation that demonstrate we are fully capable and very excited to execute this contract. Whatever the opinions are presented, whether it's our size, or capability, or equipment, or facility, or end markets, or are low, too low of a cost structure, I guess my answer kind of to all of that is we're already doing it. We already process 25,000 tons a year, and the contract is for 15 currently to expand to 20,000 more. We could do that without any disruptions to our current recycling process. So at the end of the day, I think that we provide a great opportunity for the city to continue the current recycling process and, more importantly, save over 500,000 taxpayers that are in this city over $1.3 million a year for the exact same recycling process that's going on today. So that's how I'll start, and I'll answer, answer any questions you may have and be glad to.
Thank you. We'll continue the public hearing, but stay close by for questions from council members. Are there any other proponents?
Jamie Gormley, Centennial Recycling, 12321 Aurora, Colorado. We've been working with Nebraska Land for the past four years. It's been a tight partnership. We work daily. Our company markets the same commodities that would be collected by Nebraska Land throughout the western United States. Everything that is currently collected, we have multiple markets for and move them on a daily basis throughout the country.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
If you don't mind, Mr. Jerome, I want to take off my mask because I'm fogging my glasses. Mr. President.
In case anyone else doesn't know, when you, first of all, if you're seeking government services, but the city attorney says you're not required to wear a mask in this room. And definitely while you're speaking, we have that distance so you may speak without a mask.
Thank you. Howard Hahn, 1650 Farnham, Omaha. I'm not necessarily in opposition to this particular contract. The idea of saving the city a great deal of money is appealing, I think, to all of us and, you know, is a reasonable position to take. I do have some problems with Nebraska Land, and I will start by making an admission to you, that I own the property to the east, and a few years ago, Mr. Brown was a tenant, and he's the only time in 30-some years that I've ever terminated a lease because of Mr. Brown's housekeeping. And that was the reason for it. The other, other concerns are, excuse me, in Mr. Brown's, or Nebraska Land's bid response, they say that they are in compliance with all laws and regulations. That historically has not been the case, and indeed, some of the neighbors have had to build fences to keep the litter out of their yards. In addition, there is a new curb cut at the property, and I went on whatever the site is that you can identify at city permits, and there was not an approval of a permit for that property. Mr. Brown's response indicates that the material will arrive loose in Gaylord's pallets and Stacton pallets. I believe that this only exacerbates the current littering problem that is there. As to traffic, D Street is, is a two-lane street, and in addition, cuts through, the trail cuts, South Omaha Trail cuts through there, and I just don't know that it can really handle a heck of a lot more traffic than it presently has. The response calls for an additional 30,000 square feet shown on a diagram as a trailer drop lot. Well, it's hard to tell if that's a processing and storage facility outside, or if it's to house the 53, or the 22, 53-foot trailers that Mr. Brown wants to have on the site. It is unclear to me. In addition, both financing, with all deference to the city finance department, both financing, according to Mr. Brown, for this deal, as well as addition, an additional building, both are not nailed down at this point in time. But the existing facility, he says, is going to, he's going to haul the goods to a shipping facility. Well, and that's perfectly fine, but it doesn't relieve this processing facility from the concerns we have with it. Let's see. I think that pretty well covers it. I guess what I would like here is to see some protection built in for the neighbors, A, and B, at a minimum, to have this laid over for a few weeks to get answers to some of these questions. I can answer any questions or sit down.
Thank you.
And by the way, thank you for giving me the opportunity to wear a tie, which I have not done in six months.
Are there any other opponents?
Jim Thompson, 1001 South 35th Avenue, 68105. I'm speaking as a longtime advocate of recycling in Omaha. As I mentioned in my letter, which I hope all of you have read, my involvement goes back to the 80s with the group Recycle Omaha. I believe strongly in doing the right thing for the environment, and I strongly care about the recycling program in Omaha. The recommendation to award the contract to Nebraska Land Recycling would be a huge mistake for a number of reasons. The location is wrong. There's facilities nested in residential area. The additional traffic that would add 15 to 20 trucks per day could not easily be accommodated. The, as was mentioned, Omaha Trail runs along D Street, even crossing the D Street near The entrance and exit from 42nd Street is horrendous. If you ever tried to leave Burger King or the other fast food place, it's crazy any time of the day. In discussing this with a neighborhood resident, they were in contact with Nebraska Land. We were told this week that to minimize the traffic, they would stop the trucks at 4:30 PM. In football terms, it's called head fake. You know, a maneuver player tries to get around the defense. Incidentally, the proposal to the city, as you have in front of you, states their gates will be open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Nebraska Land does not even own their building. Has their landlord, located in Texas, agreed to a 10-year lease with the possibility of two additional five-year time periods. There is no room to expand their operations as recycling processes increases from the inaccurate estimate of the proposal. I'm told the building to the east, which we just verified, well, he didn't say it wasn't for sale, but I heard it was not for sale. The proposal states new equipment would be needed and ordered. Very simply, they are not prepared for the volume that is truly expected from the start of this contract. For that matter, they state only a second sorting line will be needed when three are necessary. Market value and 60% share for the city will be jeopardized due to the fact that taping floor is outside in the elements. Haulings really don't cut it, sorry, Mayor. Including the storage of the baled material. This business has only been around for four years. If they're awarded the contracts with the hope of expanding someday, I fear they will be inundated beyond belief, beyond relief, excuse me. Speaking of the volume, these proposals are based upon is way off. The city's website currently lists a tonnage of 16,000 tons collected for 2019. Where almost to 2021, there's been no updates, but I suspect 2020 will generate a lot more than previous. With carts going to all residents, the volume will increase dramatically. Someone mentioned a consultant. I don't think they called Bellevue when Bellevue doubled their recycling numbers because they had a new cart system. Every resident uses the cart system.
You have about 30 seconds.
Huh?
You have about 30 seconds.
I'll try and breathe fast. In the recent, in the recent analysis of the hauling contracts, city did not want to award to Minnesota Company because they were too small and did not have a large municipal account. Why wouldn't the same analysis used in this case? I'm worried. I fear there'd be a short time where Nebraska Land becomes overwhelmed and Omaha chooses to throw away our recyclables. Please assure the public that this will not happen. Please reject this ordinance and start fresh with, I think, the company that can do it the best and the best bid, and that's First Star Fiber. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. Dale Gubels, 1211 Cork Drive, Papillion. Here to oppose this on behalf of First Star Fiber. We are your current contracted processor, and I want to address some of the comments about First Star first, which were very disappointing to hear. First off, First Star only sought to have a price awarded to us last year, and it would have been the first time and only time we had asked the city for a payment, a processing fee, to be able to handle this storm that we found ourselves in with market conditions having gone terribly south on us. So that conversation did take place all last year. Unfortunately, we had to ask several times because we kept getting ignored that it wouldn't be to the city's benefit to make any adjustments to our contract, even though communities across the country were experiencing the same thing. And these were communities that had been long paying their processor for the convenience of taking commingled recyclables, which someday I'd like to look in the dictionary. I think commingled recyclables probably shows up under chaos because that's what we deal with every day. As far as the comment that separate opinions from facts, where our opinions come from 20 years of running a recycling operation in this city, and one of the things that misses the attention of consultants who may think that, well, this is what they charge in other places, they have never visited Nebraska. Some of our closest end markets are 500 miles away. That means for every ton that we bring in, we have to figure out how to get it to that market, and freight is not cheap. I think the fact that you got two bids from reputable and experienced processors should give you some indications as to why our bids were realistic. In fact, it was also said that the Nebraska Land proposal will match exactly what First Star has been doing for the last 14 years for the city. Nothing could be farther from the truth, and that's a fact. I say that because we received, unfortunately, only today, minutes before the council started, results of the study that the city was trying to do with Nebraska Land to vet their capabilities. As we looked at their proposal, and then as we looked at the results of the study, they are not the same as what we do. It was mentioned that glass is not part of the collection. Absolutely, it is not. However, we know from long experience that the public wants glass in their recyclables and want it done as conveniently as possible for them. We're pulling out about eight tons of glass per month that would otherwise go to landfill, which is, I know that may not be of interest to a lot of people, but it certainly is of interest to First Star because if that glass goes up our collection, our processing line, it affects the 14 workers that we have in our facility, and it becomes a major danger for them. But we pull it out also because it keeps it out of landfill. The other thing, the proposal that Nebraska Land submitted doesn't mention milk cartons or juice cartons. That has been required by the city to collect. And a glaring one, a very glaring one, is it doesn't include 3 through 7 plastics. Now, most of you may not recognize what 3 through 7s are. I know I can't see the bottom of those little things anymore to even find that number, much less read it. But that is yogurt containers, that is butter tubs, margarine tubs. The list goes on and on. It's been going on and on, too, in terms of frequency of the number of people who are putting it in their system. It's been going up greatly. It's about 4% of what we know is in the system. Those types of things does not make Nebraska Land's proposal the equivalent of what First Star Fiber has been doing for a number of years. And for that reason, I think you need to reject this ordinance. I also just want to quickly hold up, this is some of the innovations that First Star is making. This is going to be plastic lumber that will take the 3 through 7s, the energy bags, which also was not included in Nebraska Land's proposal, as well as about any type of plastic you can possibly think of. We can make it into this type of material.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Stick around. If I could remind people to keep this first row clear behind the dais so that people can distance when they speak. So you're welcome to come over here, Mr. Hahn, or nearby. Are there any other opponents?
Haldob, 314 North, 97th Court, here in Omaha, Nebraska, representing First Star Fiber. I just want to talk about one subject, members of the council, and that's the uncertainties of the proposed contract in front of you. I want to have you do the legwork, or the Q and A, or the due diligence that examines the lease and whether it covers the term of the contract, what the landlord's insurance requirements are for the leased property, what the letter of commitment is for an approvable bank loan, which in the proposal of the current company said they're going to wait to get their bank loan to do the rest of the work they promised they will do if they get the contract, which includes buying a scale and installing it, which they don't have, sprinkler systems, new equipment orders. The finances of the company, has the due diligence been done on two or three years of their, their finances? Has an HR audit been done to look at two years of employment of their current employees to see if their proper withholdings and fees and licensing's have been done? The correct determination of each person who works there's status as a legal employee? The brokerage system proposed in the contract of how the recycled material is to be disposed of, that is to say, in addition to reprocessing from the current proposed site to two or three or four other leased sites where product will be stored and then shipped? How many trucks are involved in that in and out every day? And, and have those leases been determined? Are they certain so that the pricing's been worked into the bid that is being approved by this recommended contract? And what's the start date? December 1st? January 1st? Or sometime in the future? What date would that be? And what happens in between if the start date is not the 1st of January? So I conclude my remarks by asking for your attention to getting those questions resolved.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Can you hear me with my mask on? Yeah? It's good? Okay, great. I'm gonna leave it on then. My name's Scott Blake, 2316 North 52nd Street. I doubt the city council will reserve, will reverse the mayor's decision, but I just want to point out a few things. to point out a few things. We are about to approve a ten-year contract worth 22.8 million with a company that has no website, no publicly available email, and no social media. This multi-year contract worth millions will have a direct impact on every Omaha resident, and yet citizens have no way of contacting the company. I did find a phone number for Nebraska Land Recycling, but it took a lot of digging. It was actually easier to find information about the owner, Lance Brown's multiple DUIs and his Husker football stats. I do not blame the Omaha, I do not blame the city for trying to save money, but evaluating bids on price alone is extremely short-sighted. Nebraska Land might be the cheapest, but they are definitely not fit for Omaha, and local sustainability experts have major concerns. This is actually really hard to talk with. There we go. So, I'll say that again. Nebraska Land might be the cheapest, but they have, they are definitely not the best fit for Omaha, and local sustainability experts have major concerns. Hillside Solutions calls Nebraska Land "a work in progress" and said, quote, "Due to the lack of sorting and, due to the lack of sorting infrastructure and connections to commodities markets, we determined at this time not to send materials to Nebraska Land", end quote. Veritas Group toured the facility and said Nebraska Land sends the vast majority of their materials to the landfill. But on Nebraska Land's bid, they say in four years of processing, zero tons have ever been landfilled. So which is it? A vast majority or zero tons to the landfill? That is a pretty big discrepancy, and the city council should verify before approving the contract. Nebraska Land says they have plans to improve their sorting equipment if the contract is approved, but Omaha already has a world-class recycling center, First Star Fiber. First Star already accepts and processes more types of materials than Nebraska Land is aiming for. And I know the mayor said that it is an apples-to-apples comparison, but you can say goodbye to that orange energy bag and those cool plastic two-by-fours. City leadership should be encouraging Omaha to be less wasteful. Remember the proposed ban on plastic bags? Now would be a good time to revisit that. So to recap, we are about to give a young and inexperienced company $23 million for a reduction in services and jeopardize the city's recycling program. Quality comes at a price, and Omaha is going to get what it pays for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights. Madam Clerk. Oh, Ben Gray. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things, you know, I just wanted to, couple of questions I have. One is, I, I think we were at, when we had our pre-council meeting this morning, Jim, I thought you said, did we have a consultant or did we not have a consultant? Because I heard this morning that, I thought I heard that we didn't have one, and then this afternoon I hear we did. So I wanted to, I wanted to clear that up.
Sure, sure. Jim Tyler, Public Works. And I want to make sure I'm answering that question completely to you, because what I heard this morning in the question from Councilwoman Melton was, did we have a consultant review the operations? Did I get that correct? No, we did not. We conducted our review of operations with our staff and the financial operations with our finance department. So we did not use an outside consultant to review his operations. What we did use an outside consultant for was a review of the contract terms. Okay? So the contract terms that are in the contract were reviewed by an outside consultant, and we used industry experts to help us craft that contract. So that's the distinction I was trying to make on that.
Okay, thank you. I just, thank you for clearing that up. Secondly, a comment was made here this afternoon, I'm not sure who made it, I think maybe you did, Jim, that all they needed was a conveyor belt and they wouldn't need anything else. Wouldn't they, in fact, if they got the contract, wouldn't they have to purchase another land, piece of land or another facility or something like that?
I'm going to let Mr. Brown answer any questions about his facilities and the operations of his facilities, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure.
I, I just want to get the answer. That's a hawk.
I repeat myself. Lance Brown, 2041 South 109 Fifth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. To answer that question, we are currently already processing residential, and so we already went out and bought all the equipment that we needed to, to accommodate two other haulers in town. So the only thing we have to buy is a, is a conveyor based on what we want to do more efficient is simply keep the cardboard, the, the majority of the cardboard away from the residential mix. So that, that's just a, that's just a business decision. That's nothing that would need to be done for a truck to start dropping to us tomorrow.
Okay, so you don't need to, you don't need any additional land, another facility, anything like that?
No. Then the other part of that, good point I forgot to mention, is we've just made the decision to move our finished goods instead of storing them inside of our building, we just want to move them to a separate warehouse so that when the semi-trailers come to pick them all up, we don't have that traffic right there in our area. That's all. But we're already currently shipping out of our current location, six, seven loads a day.
Okay. And thank you. Do you, and my, my last question, and I'm, I'm glad that you came up sort of, because I was going to ask you anyway.
Okay.
Do you have a diversity and inclusion plan, or do you have, what's the makeup of your workforce?
Right now, we have a lot of employees that are right in councilmembers Palermo's district, a lot, live right in that area. Very diverse, I would, yeah. I mean, I don't know the exact numbers, but it is definitely a lot of Latinos, a lot of African Americans, a lot of white.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's very, very diverse.
Okay, thank you. Those answers, those answered my question. Just wanted to make a quick statement. As, as I have said to both hauler, both individuals here seeking the contract, that at least for this council member, I'm, I'm not going to support a ten-year contract. And part of the reason I'm not going to do that is because of the volatility of the market. And because of what I'm reading nationally in, in various publications, don't seem to bode well for, for recycling. I'm hearing a lot of information about oil companies that, for example, there was a law that was passed recently where they put the label that says recycling on all of the plastics, when in fact, some of these plastics have a difficult time being recycled. And my understanding is, at least from First Star, they're looking at ways to even address some of those plastics that are not usable right now. And that's not saying that I would support that company over the other one. I'm just saying that because of the volatility of the market, because of the things that I'm reading, national publications from individuals who are not oil companies, who are in individuals who are interested in not only recycling, but climate change and other things as well, which is something we ought to be seriously concerned about. The volatility of the market makes it such that I can't, in good conscience, based on what I'm reading, support a five-year contract. So I just wanted you all to know upfront that that's, you know, that those are the discussions that we've had, that's the decision that I have made personally, and I just wanted the, you and the public to know that, that based on what I've heard today, none of my, none of my opinions, none of my thoughts have changed at this point in time. So with that, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make that clear to people.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding. Or no, Melton.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, there it goes.
Yeah. I guess, Lance, could, could you come up? I had a series of questions. If I could, please. So what's the timeline for the, to order and install the additional conveyor belt?
The conveyor is on hold, waiting to be purchased upon award. In typical past fashion, it probably takes us about a week in logistics to get it here, and then probably another week to get it installed.
What additional equipment or investments are needed then to, in order to begin the contract?
On top of the conveyor that we want to get, we, I believe the contract states that there has to be a scale onsite, and currently we use an off-site for all of our weighing, and so we would have to put in our scale. That, that's the major time crunch.
What's, what's the timeline for order installation?
The, the company I'm working with quoted me thirty to forty-five days if it's not in the winter where it's too cold and frozen to break up what we need to break up.
Which we're coming into winter here pretty quick.
Yes, we are. So a decision, a decision sooner rather than later would avoid that.
What's the, what's the price of something like that?
The one we're looking at is probably forty-five to fifty thousand dollars.
And the conveyor belt, I forgot to ask the price.
Conveyor belt will run us about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. And then how, how are those to be paid for or financed?
That'll be, that'll be paid out of the cash flow. We, we have that money.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's see. Do you use, this goes to some of Mr. Gray's questions. Do you use e-Verify for your employees?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. And, and I was going to ask about diversity plans for employment as well, but I think you've, you've addressed that. How many employees do you have now?
Thirty to thirty-two, depending on the week that it is.
Okay. And then I think in your response, you said you were going to add shifts?
Yeah, so once we kind of evaluated the residential material that's coming in, it really became just a two-part play for us. It's a, it's a equipment play, which we already, we already process through new equipment, and then it's a, just a second shift play. So currently, we process sixty tons that we get every single day in a ten-hour shift. So the new material coming in is currently at about forty-five, forty-five tons a day, projected up to be sixty tons a day. So just doing the numbers that we already go off of, all we have to really do is add a second shift.
Okay. And I'm sorry, so how many people would that be?
We are going to bring in twenty to twenty-two employees to handle all the additional stuff that we want to handle.
Okay. So walk me through then, walk me through the truck circulation, not internally to the site, but just truck circulation externally to the site, so coming and goings.
Yeah, so currently, we have a total of eighteen trucks that show up at our facility throughout the day, and that, that's a combination of the haulers that are dropping the material to us, any, any of our own trucks. We have a driver that goes and picks up customers for us and just brings us back one trailer at a time to unload it. And then any semi-trailers that we have to send out to, to finish good to end market. And that encompasses all those numbers.
Is it eighteen?
We're at about eighteen. Yep. And then the current contract, or the new contract, was estimated to be between eighteen and twenty-three, depending on new trucks from FCC, can they handle it better than Waste Management has been? And based on their volume that they can hold in the back, I would think right around twenty is probably a fair number to use.
And that's in addition to the eighteen?
That is correct.
Okay, so more than doubles kind of current traffic, right?
To, to our parking lot, that is correct. It does double. But in that area, coming down D Street, we're all aware that Conrico is right there behind us, they have over four hundred trucks, if not six hundred, on seasonal dates coming to their facility, so. And there's probably another sixty to eighty trucks that go past us to the other properties that are all industrial zone, too.
Got it. I missed about here or so.
Yeah, we're, we're a very small percentage of, of that traffic.
Now, walk me through circulation internal to the lot. Once the, once the truck hits the, the curb cut.
Yeah, so we have it about as simple as you can get it. Right now, they would essentially just come on the scale, they turn into our awning area, they open the gate, they dump it out, and essentially, some of them leave right away. Some of them will sit there and clean out their truck and do whatever they want because there's nobody else in the lot at the time. And it's very simple. Since they are weighing off-site, they, they don't even need to come inside of our building or anything at this point. If it's, the scale's onsite, then they could just get a...
The scale needs to be onsite according to...
Correct. So when it would start, then they, they would just get it up, and then we would have a record that would be going to Public Works every week for the numbers.
So I'm, I'm looking at the hand-drawn diagram that was included in the, the response. So how, when, when, after the truck dumps either to the commercial bay on the west or the residential bay on the east, and again, that's a, that's a canopied area, correct?
That is correct.
So subject to or open to elements?
It really doesn't, it pretty much protects from the rain and the wind if it gets underneath that awning, so.
Okay. That's, when I drove by the side, I mean, you could clearly see in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's open to the elements, at least from what I could tell.
You, you could have seen some of the material that hadn't been pushed underneath the awning, possibly, because throughout the day, there's material that would be dropped out outside the awning.
I was there on a Sunday.
Well, we could have maybe not have cleaned out our, our facility.
All right.
Throughout, throughout any given day, we can get completely bailed out and have zero loose material in that entire fifteen thousand square foot drop zone.
Okay. So after, after a truck has backed up and dumped, then it exits the lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Does not go back on the scale for terror?
It, it will in the future, it doesn't need to now, because none of our, none of our trucks at this point need to be weighed.
Okay, but when, when the scale would be onsite, which is a requirement of the contract?
That is correct. It would go, it would get a empty weight on its way out.
Right, so for terror. And I, you know, maybe it was just the way you hand drew it, but the, the movement to get from back on the scale after dumping and to what would be the exit would be a pretty hard move for a semi-truck or for a garbage truck?
For a garbage truck, actually, all they would have to do is they could just back off the scale and then just go to the second exit. They, they wouldn't have to go up the initial, the entrance that they would, came in on, where the scale would be.
So the, the current facility is, you've got about sixteen thousand feet, including the office space, under roof? Is that correct?
Under roof, yes. That's, that's where the operation of the, of the sort line and stuff would take place.
And then another sixteen thousand feet or so of that canopied area?
Yep, that would be our drop zone.
And I think you said on about two acres?
That is what the lot is sized at, correct?
And I had, I was, I was interested, and I know it's been brought up by others, too, but I was interested in, in the existing lease that you have for that facility since you, you don't own that property.
Correct.
I think has been, been stated. But in, in your response to, there is mention of an additional thirty thousand square feet of additional trailer lot to be, to drop material. Can you, where's that?
Correct. So our entire parking lot right now is being used for trailer storage and dock space and so forth and so on. That's the, what we call the trailer lot. But that's also where the trucks come in. So with my proposal of moving all of those trailers off of the property and into a warehouse and shipping facility, that would allow us all that open space for any trucks to drop into that parking lot at any given time. So we could get six, seven, eight trucks dumping in there all at the same time.
Okay, and then there's also mention of a twenty thousand square foot building on, it says on private industrial lot, is that what we were talking about this morning?
That is, that is the warehousing options that we are looking at, and I budgeted into our numbers at least a twenty thousand square foot building, which we can store our finished goods in about three to four thousand square feet, because we bail to ship daily, we don't hold on to our finished goods. You know, we don't, we don't have two hundred thousand square foot storage facility and try to play the market. We, we literally bail it, get it out the door.
So, and we had, I had this question, I think, when, when we met with you and Public Works last week. Walk me through the processing of, of the verification for what is recycled and what goes to landfill?
Yeah, right now, we essentially process everything, and, and it all gets recycled unless it's contaminated. So right now, we're...
How, how much is typically contaminated?
We have, our residual rate right now went up from about eight percent to about nine and a half, almost ten percent over the last two months.
And...
And that's bringing in, because we started with some additional residential material.
Walk, walk me through what makes it contaminated?
It could be a number, it could be a number of things. It could be oil in there, it could just be pure trash. It could be that the laundry detergent bottle was never cleaned out, so there's... It could be that the laundry detergent bottle was never cleaned out, so there's just tide everywhere on the load. And so when you get into residential, if they're not dropping it in accurately in what should be recycled, then it just becomes residual for us. There's nothing I can do with it. And an old plastic baby car seat, you know, is something we have to pull out. And when, when you start talking about like plastics three through seven, that, that's the hardest commodity to, to find an end market that's profitable for. Now, let me be clear. Every plastic has an end market. It may not be profitable. So we have zero concern with end markets and getting them to places that we need to. Matter of fact, if there was a local option that turns it into lumber or fuel or whatever, that would be great for us to team up with and sell those plastics to that local market. But at the end of the day, it all gets recycled. You, you can go as deep as you want into different types of plastics and separate them by colors and if it has labels on them and, and clear and all that kind of stuff, if you wanna make your business more profitable. But as far as it getting recycled, it can all get recycled.
So I, I, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit, because you just said something that, that goes to one of the questions I was gonna have about the, the revenue sharing portion of, of the contract. And you've just said that if, if you do those further separations, it would be more profitable, which, are you planning on doing that? Because if, if, according to the contract, if we're revenue sharing, I would, I would think the city of Omaha would, would want you to be doing that kind of separation so that we could maximize the revenue share back to the city.
Okay, great, great question. The actual revenue sharing is based on the market pricing of the broad topic and category of HDPE. Not what we do with the HDPE and how much we can make by separating it into many different categories. Your, your rebate that's kicked back to you in the contract is simply stated that they know that the volume, there's five percent of the stream is HDPE. And that will be rebated at X dollars based on the market price, regardless what we do with it. We make zero 'cause of trucking, like that was brought up, it's expensive in the Midwest, or we make a thousand dollars. And that's irrelevant to, to you guys, because you already are guaranteed the rebate money.
And, and those percentages are also predetermined. They're, they're at the, the time it hits your lot, so to speak.
Correct. That is in the contract stated as it is. We, we don't have any bearing on what those percentages are.
Okay, so let, let me go back a little bit then to the, the processing of the recycled materials. And, I mean, I, I, I think we all want to ensure that if we have a robust recycling program, we also want it to be verifiable as well, too. So what insurances do, do we have as a city that what is going into the recycle tubs no longer bins, that it will be recycled and, and not sent to the landfill?
I, I believe in the, and I'll let Jim Key or Jim Tyler talk to what, what their assurances are. But I, I guess I would just make the comment that it is very wise of me and my business to recycle every single thing we can, because if I don't, it costs me money to get rid of. So it wouldn't be smart of me to throw away anything that I can get rid of at a much cheaper price than the landfill. So that's just my business side of it. As far as what assurances there are and.
Okay. I'll, I'll, in a minute, Jim. I'll, I'll add a couple more I wanted to. Okay, so someone mentioned too, the orange bag program. We had a discussion about that as well, too. Walk, walk me through how your company would be processing the, the orange bags.
Yeah, currently, we get a minimal amount of orange bags that come through either the residential or the commercial. And for, since it started, since we started taking the commingled material, we grabbed them and we set them off to the side. So we're already touching all of those bags. For about a year and a half, it was common for us to call First Star and have them come pick it up in big boxes that we set them in. And, and then they would come and do their end market that they had established. Until about three or four months ago, they, they have not come to get them. So I don't know what happened there, but we have orange bags sitting in our facility in Gaylords. And the only difference that I knew of is that I asked to be reimbursed for the Gaylord boxes that we were giving them. And I have not got a return call or anything since.
So when, when you started processing more of the residential just a few months ago.
Yes.
You didn't see an increase in the orange bags coming in?
No, absolutely not. Very minimal. I would say we have maybe one Gaylord a day. And one Gaylord can hold anywhere between ten to forty pounds. So it's, it's very, very light, and that's what we would fill up in any given day.
But if you're filling that up in any given day, I mean, if, if you've been processing residential where most of the orange bags are coming from since the summer, you don't have a number of Gaylords sitting there with product to go?
We, we do right now. We've got like six or seven Gaylords sitting there.
Okay.
But they, they haven't been picked up.
Okay. I assume probably in, in your financial analysis and maybe a analysis of our finance department too, but what, what would you, or did you kind of project what the, the net to the city might be based upon the revenue share?
What it would cost minus the rebate you guys get? I, I did not project that. I didn't know. It's.
All right.
I, I just came up with a, when I did my pricing for the bid, I talked to several people in the Midwest market talking about the different issues we have with Midwest logistics and getting stuff to trucking, to end mills. And I just started to get the information of what are, what are you guys paying? What are you guys getting? I said, 'cause if I'm gonna get in the residential, I wanna be fair. And I didn't think a four million dollar bid that I read about was a fair price. So I couldn't use Omaha's number, 'cause that was the only place that had a number, for, for my analysis. So when I talked to all the different places, they were anywhere between forty to eighty dollars a ton is what they were charging their, their cities and, and retail rates and stuff like that. So then when I came to the bid, I just simply added the rebate into that number. So I took my seventy-five dollars that I'm currently charging and said, "Hey, let's throw forty to forty-two dollars in as the rebate, 'cause that's what I estimated the rebate would be cut back to the city." And that's where I came up with my bid. 'Cause I really couldn't use the Omaha Market Analysis number, because at two hundred dollars a ton, that's unheard of in the country. So I.
So you think your net number then is about seventy-five dollars a ton?
That is what I currently charge two other haulers that drop the exact same residential material that, that the city would be dropping to us. And I believe that to be a very fair price that we are at.
Okay, I appreciate you answering these. I think I just have one more for you. Mr. Blake, who testified earlier, I found the same article that Veridus wrote. I think it was actually a couple of years old though, but it did mention that there was product that would, that would go from Nebraska land to the landfill. And I, I know that it's also been stated here today that you've indicated that you've never had product recyclables go to the landfill. Can you answer or address that?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the Veridus Group, three and a half years ago, when we first opened our facility, they came down and they had a couple of customers, I believe it was some hospitals or something, that wanted to bring their material to us, 'cause it was at a, a much, much better value than where they were currently taking it. And so they had talked to me about it, and I, my, my comment was, "We don't get a lot of plastics." 'Cause we don't. In the commercial stream, there's not a lot of plastics. So when they had asked me, I said, "Really, all we do right now is we do pop bottles and shrink bales, because that's ninety percent of our plastics that we would have gotten in the commercial side." And, and so then, whatever they said after that, i- in an article or a blog or whatever, may have been misconstrued. But, but since then, our, our whole, our whole process has changed and it's totally different with all the equipment we have. And.
I just, I, I just kind of find it hard to imagine to, to make a blanket statement like that when you even expressed earlier the, that you have contaminated product come in, that, that none, nothing's going in the landfill.
No, no, no. The blank, the statement that I made was, our residual rate right now is about nine and a half percent. The, I said zero tons of ever, of finished goods have ever been landfilled.
Oh, of finished goods.
I, I, yeah, we, we've never not sold.
Totally different.
Our finished goods, right. And, and then the other statement I made was zero tons of dropped material to our location has ever had to be diverted to a landfill.
Okay, I appreciate you answering the questions, Mr. Key or Mr. Tyler.
Jim Key, Omaha Public Works Department. Your question was about assurances of.
Yeah.
So within the contract itself, the city has the ability to audit sales records, basically what's gone out of the facility based upon the tonnage of material, total material that's leaving. And so we would look at the material that we brought in. We would also ask for the material that they brought in from their other operations. The material from their other operations, per the terms of the contract, would remain confidential. But our tonnage and then what's, what tonnage is going out based upon to wherever their end market was or to their broker, and we would marry those up. And if things didn't pass the sniff test, that's when we would know some material had been not, not recycled. And then there's also liquidated damages to the two, two thousand dollars per incident of knowing that material that was to be, to be recycled ended up in a landfill.
And you said you have the discretion to do that. How, how often, how often would that be conducted?
I would think with the startup of this facility, we would look at that on a monthly basis. And then if things are, are gelling, we might be able to dial that back to quarterly. It, it, there's no set timeframe of, you know, how, how much data we have to look at. It's at our discretion. And certainly, if, if we needed to, to generate a report, we could do that.
But in addition, you're, I mean, you're really kind of looking at two things, I think, as I understand it. You're looking at, number one, again, when, when truck hits scale or what the, the N minus the terror, you know, what the, the weight of the product is, if you will. I mean, obviously, that is where the determination of what our revenue share comes from.
Yes.
From pre-described percentages and amounts based upon the, the weight. But we're, but, and that's, I, I mean, that's pretty easy to figure out. What's not easy to figure out then, I think, is, you know, once, once it gets dumped in the, the open canopy, how much of it actually gets processed and, and recycled, or how much of it ends up at the landfill? And that's, I think, that's the harder part to verify. So that's, I, I'm concerned about how we're gonna be able to, to keep on top of that.
So, so they're scaling in and they're, and they're, when the material is leaving the facility and the bales, those are also weighed. So we know how much material is actually leaving the facility in a semi-truck and going to wherever its end, end market is. The other thing that we have within the.
But aren't some of, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but aren't some of those trucks going to, it might be finished goods going to the warehouse?
Uh huh.
Which we don't have a lease on yet, but that's a different story. But that's, so how, how, how do you know which is which? How do you know which is going to landfill and which is going to?
We would still need an accounting of, of which commodity broker and how much went to where, whether it be plastics or fiber or metals. The other thing that we have within the contract is, is twice a year, we'll do a, basically a, a recycle analysis to determine how much of each commodity is in our residential recycling, as well as our drop-off sites.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll know pretty well what our, what our makeup is in terms of, are we sixty percent fiber or are we forty percent? What is that? What is the actual makeup? And that goes into the revenue or cost share formula.
Okay, I'll just, I think I only have one more question. I appreciate my fellow council members letting me take so much time. But, and I don't think we need finance to answer this. I think you can. But so regardless of if it's First Star or if it's Nebraska land or Waste Management, the, the revenue share to the city of Omaha is an easy calculation. It's not so much, it's not based upon where it goes really, because it's, it's based upon the tonnage once it hits a scale on the way in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so to net out a number from anyone's bid, that, that amount is gonna be constant across the board, correct?
Correct. And, and we'll look at the, the value of those commodities on a monthly basis, 'cause that's what's gonna generate the revenue or cost share.
But I guess, yeah, and.
So yeah, that will be the same, 'cause we're, we're looking at a, at a market index.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Key. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown? And Mr. Key, don't go far away. I'm gonna have a couple of questions for you. So, and, and I, I'm trying to follow all of it, but you said that you have got a parking lot where you have trailers stored, and you're gonna move the trailers so that you can handle the additional material?
That is correct.
But that'll be uncovered then, won't it?
The, the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is an uncovered area. That's about thirty thousand square foot of uncovered area. That's not the fifteen thousand square foot covered area that we currently push all our material under. So in comparison, we have an awning that we push that's covered. We push all of our loads right now underneath. And we get processed through that every day. So there's no material at the end of the night if, if we bailed everything out. So that's fifteen thousand square feet of awning. And then there's thirty thousand square feet of additional drop area that we could let trucks drop in that then we can push underneath. In comparison, your current haulers go and drop into a seven thousand square foot area. So we, just our covered awning is twice the size to drop in, and we have an additional thirty that they could drop. So FCC would have no issues at all dropping the material to us.
Well, but it's gonna be dropped outside.
That is correct. It will be dropped outside.
So if it's raining and snowing, then, 'cause right now, I mean, what I was really excited about getting over the seven years is I wanted covered recycle bins. I even have a little covered recycle bin that's been sitting up on my shelf that I can't wait to have, because currently recyclables just blow all over the neighborhood. But we have the open bins.
Right.
And it's, it's all overflowing, and I don't wanna be the culprit of that, but you gotta set it out the night before. So I'm just really excited that I don't have to get up at, you know, five-thirty in the morning, run it out. It's gonna rain all night, because otherwise, all my recyclables are kind of ruined and there's no point in doing it. But now, if my covered recyclables that are now gonna be dry, no matter what, they're now gonna get dumped outside, it's gonna kind of, I mean, to me, that, then, you know, we, we've taken all these steps and efforts to make sure the recyclables are, are now not going to be affected by the weather.
Right.
In, in climate weather. Now they're, if it's gonna be dumped outside, I think it's kind of counterproductive.
Let me, let me clarify a misconception that may be out there as far as weather into recyclables. Just because recyclables get wet, that doesn't make them not recyclable. You can definitely still bail all that up and sell that to an end market. Matter of fact, we don't really mind it getting wet, because it just adds weight, water weight, to our bail when we ship it out. So it, it doesn't hurt material to get wet. It's not like all of a sudden paper or cardboard got wet and now you have to throw it away. That, that's a misconception. So there may be additional charges for processing wet material, but that's just a business choice from the processor to say, "It takes more time and effort to process it when it's wet."
Well, what, because doesn't the wet paper, it sticks to the plastic bottles? I mean, it just, it creates more effort. And, and that kind of leads me to my next question in regards to, are your employees all hand-sort everything? Is that right?
No, that's incorrect. We, we have equipment now that we run all of our residential through that actually. We, we have a, a fiber screen that takes fiber, and then non-fiber separates that out. We have a magnet that takes all the steel. We have an eddy current that had, that takes all the aluminum. So really, the only stuff that we're grabbing by hand right now are our plastics.
So how many screens do you have?
We just have one screen for our fiber.
One screen?
Yep.
Just for the fiber?
Yep.
Okay. Now you, I know you have about thirty employees, and you said you're gonna have, you're gonna increase it by twenty. Do you think that's gonna be enough to handle as much recyclables as Omaha? I mean, we're gonna double. Do you think that's going to be enough to handle as much recyclables as Omaha? I mean, we're going to double the amount of material that you're processing, yet you're not going to double the number of employees?
Right now, we actually run a shift, and then we have some extra bodies that run a second shift to bail up some of our non-fiber, such as aluminum and milk jugs and other stuff like that. So we have a skeleton second shift started, because I wanted to have that for the residential piece of things. So actually, twenty to twenty-two is my highest number that we would possibly need to bring in. And so in comparison, before we got the residential, we were doing twenty thousand tons a year with ten employees on one six-hour shift. So it is definitely doable to have less bodies when you have better equipment, and that's what we have.
Okay. And how about for purposes of, you have liability insurance?
Yeah, we do have current liability insurance, and we'll have the additional liability insurance that's asked in the contract. We will up our coverage.
You're going to up the cover, what, because?
To the contract stipulations.
And I, and I have another question, but at this point, I'll, I I might just shoot you an email about it later and the cost of liability insurance, because I think that that's gotten way up.
Uh, it is. It is a very minimal increase of what we're already paying.
Do you know what, I mean, do you know what you're paying now for liability insurance?
Uh, I believe we were about a three thousand dollar policy, and I think it goes up to like fifty-two hundred is the quote I just got. Because once I saw the bid package and it had to be increased, I I called the insurance company and they're waiting for me to say, yep, increase it.
And have you provided a copy of your insurance policy to the city?
Of our current, of our current insurance policy?
Right.
I I have not.
Okay. And I mean, because a lot of that is, I mean, my my concern is also with the fire, fire, the potential for fire, and you have residential homes near there as well, and you have employees that may be working two and three shifts.
Yep.
And so that's, you know.
Absolutely.
Concern about the the amount of insurance you have, that you would be able to cover something that happened.
Yeah, what I what I actually did is I sent a co, I sent a copy of the contract, the the sample contract that was in the bid packet to my insurance company. And I said, hey, here's the requirements that they need. Is there anything else in here that you want to cover, blah, blah, blah? And then they sent me back a, here's what your price will be. You'll be completely covered based on that bid packet.
And and that also, I I noticed in your bid that you put, you have had zero injuries at all. And I have to say, that struck me a little bit because of the the business that you're in. I mean, even accidents happen, and accidents happen, you know, in virtually any office. I mean, I I have a law office, and I know that we've had at least one injury. It's very minor, but it was in the law office, right? To say zero injuries, are you, were there zero injuries, or do you not report the injuries because of the employees that you have working?
There were zero injuries in four and a half years. I came from international paper who were extremely strict on the safety protocols. And my operations manager and my logistics managers came with me from international paper. So we take safety as a highest priority as profitability when I started the company. So for me to say we've had zero injuries in four and a half years is a very easy statement for me to make.
But that would be, I mean, just an accidental, you know, somebody drops something on their foot, somebody cuts themselves with maybe the a piece of glass that made it through that get in there, or, you know, they're lifting something heavy and they get a back strain or something like that. I mean, it it just, it threw me, it it just struck me almost like a red flag to say zero injuries. To me, I looked at that and said, that means they're not reporting. And and I mean, for purposes of the protection of of the people that you're employing, who a lot of them, I guess, live in Mr. Palermo's district, I'd be concerned for some of its constituents that maybe getting injured. I mean, a number of us, I think, own businesses. Mr. Palermo, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I think he would, he could probably back me up in saying that sometimes people have accidents.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Something or, you know.
Absolutely.
Tripping over.
All all I can say is we've had zero accidents, and we have three working owner managers that are out there every single day, right alongside them. And they know they can come and say anything to us at any time and tell us there's anything as far as unsafe or they don't feel good or or whatever the case may be. But in four and a half years, I can't make up an accident to satisfy your question, because we we have not had an accident.
Not one accident in four and a half years?
Correct, not one.
Somebody sliced their finger?
No. Now, property accidents of people hitting walls and stuff like that, oh, yeah. With skid steers and stuff, I've done that and ran forklifts into poles and stuff.
I'm not concerned about the property. I'm concerned about people.
And I'm concerned about people, too, so.
And the orange bags, I know that, I know First Star gets tons of orange bags. I I do the orange bag. I know a lot of people in my neighborhood. I see the orange bags. We put them in all of our covered carts when they were delivered to to the residents' homes. I know that the orange bags are are being talked about and used in a lot of our schools. And so then a lot of the kids are coming home and wanting their parents to use the the orange bags. So there's going to, what will you do to ensure that the the orange bags are going to be processed appropriately and get get to someplace where that's, the orange bags aren't going to go in the landfill?
Right. No, absolutely. The orange bags is actually a very easy material to sort, because it's pretty obvious it's an orange bag. So to set them off to the site and put them in Gaylord's like we're currently doing is a very simple process that we're already doing. Whether now we team up with First Star to have them continue their relationship with Hefty or Dow Chemical or whoever the end market is, or whether we establish a relationship, if we get the contract, to work directly with Dow Chemical or whoever else wants the orange bags as the end result. I don't know enough about the end market aspect of it to be an expert on it. But as far as getting the material, whether it's loose or bailed up to an end market, it it would be just like any of the other products that we that we handle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Key?
Jim Key, Omaha Public Works.
And thank you, Mr. Key. And I I guess I just had a couple of questions on the audit process. How will we know what end product from Omaha? How how will we know which of the end products came from Omaha versus maybe came from other contracts that Nebraska Land has, since they 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 have contracts with other Sarpy County cities? I guess I'm confused on on the audit process.
Sure. We we won't necessarily know specifically, did this bottle come from Omaha or did it come from Papillion? We won't, we won't know that. But what we will know is X amount of plastics entered that facility, X amount of plastics left that facility, and either went to this broker or that broker. And that's how we would marry it up. So if we had, you know, ten tons from Papillion and twenty tons from Omaha, so that's thirty tons total coming in, we need to see on a on a bill relating or wherever it went to that end market, thirty tons went somewhere to be recycled and not to the landfill.
So are the trucks that will be coming in from others be weighed and scaled? Will they, will they go on the scale now, too?
I believe once they have their scale in place, and I'd let Lance speak to that, but for us, we would need a a crystal clear accounting of the other material coming in. And if and if that's not adding up, that's when we would have to have a change of operation or require that that material be weighed.
And is there any way, as part of the audit process, we would know how much is at, like, how many tons actually goes to the landfill? So there would be some kind of way, I mean, I assume it'd be like one truck once it's filled would go to the landfill directly from the recycling.
Sure. I mean, similar to any other material that's leaving. And in this case, in all likelihood, the tonnages that are going to the landfill would would cross that landfill scale.
Right.
And they would get, or Nebraska Land would get a bill from the landfill. So we would say, we could either ask the landfill. Normally, they won't give us another person's account. But we would require Nebraska Land to show us your, show us your landfill tickets in terms of what went to the landfill, because we know a certain amount of material that's coming in from our recycling stream may have residual or contaminated or non-recyclable material in it. That that that's happening, happening currently. And it it'll unfortunately continue to happen. It's just educating people and educating the residents on on what exactly can go into the recycling bin.
So I got, I, well, and I guess what it is, is, you know, kind of looking back, there are things that I wish would have been in this bid. First of all, the orange bags, specifically, you know, the requirement for the orange bag participation. And then also, you know, the audit process, because I think you could have put that in the contract that you could get as part of the audit process, you could get that information from Waste Management.
The the orange bag is in the contract. It's listed as one of the materials that are to be recycled. We allowed in the bid, any of the, any of the participants to say, you know what, we we don't want to deal with the orange bag, so we're going to call, we're going to call out an exception. And in some cases, we did see that. But in the case of Nebraska Land and First Star, we did not see an exclusion of the energy bag.
Okay. And is that'll be part of the audit process, too, to make sure?
Yes.
Okay. I think at this point, I I don't have any further questions at this point for you in regards to Nebraska Land, and I'll let my other council members ask their questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been a strong advocate for city recycling programs and was a co-sponsor of the plastic bag ban, so I tend to have strong opinions about these things. I don't really have a strong opinion, though, about who processes our recycling. Because we aren't talking about who picks up your recycling here. It's just who's processing the materials and making sure they get to market. As long as it's a reasonable price, those materials are actually getting recycled and to market, and we can count on that contract for many years to come. I'm, in some respects, grateful we're in this spot right now, having this conversation, because about a year ago, that was in question. We didn't know that we would have a processing contract in place, and I'm thankful to the council for sticking with it and and having this robust discussion today about it. And for those that are watching, I also want to encourage you when we do go to carts, and we're hopeful our recycling rates do increase, that right now, we're only recycling about eleven percent of our waste stream. We can do a lot better than that, better than that, and we need to keep that in mind as we talk about these things. Councilman Gray and I, I think, share a lot of opinions in that respect, in our interest in recycling. I think we differ a little bit, though, in the term of this contract. It sounds like he prefers a five-year term. I actually appreciate the ten-year term, because it keeps us committed to a program long-term. And that's, that's what we're talking about, doing the the right thing in a long-term fashion. And so in that respect, I I favor a ten-year approach. So five years from now, somebody can't say, oh, there's no way we can be doing this. It's too expensive. But we remain committed, remain committed to recycling and doing the right thing. And I think having some risk mitigation in the contract is appropriate and does safeguard, in that respect, against markets that are volatile. A number of councilmembers already asked questions I had about some of the observations from Verdis and the tonnage and and making sure things are going to recycling markets, not being landfilled under the proposed contract here. But, Mr. Brown, maybe just a couple more questions for you. I'd like to verify. I also did get a bunch of emails to that effect, questioning or at least wanting verification that all plastics and the orange bag program are in fact continuing. And you don't do anything different than what is done by First Star right now. I think you've said yes, but if you could confirm that for me?
Yeah, absolutely. As far, as far as getting the plastics.
Would you please state your name again?
Oh, sorry, Lance Brown, two zero four one, South one hundred ninety-fifth Street. As far as processing, I guess I want to, there's clarification in that type of a question that needs to be addressed. There's a processing aspect, and then there's an end market. The processing aspect is all the same. I mean, you 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 sort the material out from when it's all commingled, and then you process it into its categories. The depth you go into the processing, that that is what can vary from recycling facilities all across the country. Because of, let's just use H T P E, for example. I can take all the colors and all the clears and put them together and send them to an end market. I don't need to sort out naturals versus colors versus white versus whatever, because there's an end market for everything. Now, the business side of it, it makes a lot more sense when something's more valuable to separate it out. So we will do our clear milk jugs separately than our colored H T P E. So as far as how much sorting happens and 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 how detailed you get into a facility, that that's a business's decision. But as far as getting them to an end market, if you wanted to, you could throw all your mixed plastics together and send them off and maybe not be very profitable on that stream. Right now, what what we would prefer to do is we would have our orange bags separately. We would have our P E T ones, which are pop bottles and water bottles separately. Then we'd have our colored H T P E separate. We'd have our natural milk jug separate. And then we'd have the three through sevens, which are the toughest market to get anything out of. And if we have to lose money on that small of a percentage, then we will. Because right now, three through seven is makes up like, like, not even one percent of the stream. So it's like, if we lose money on that less than one percent, we can make it up on something else. So as far as it all getting recycled, that's, that's not a, that's not an issue at all.
And so there's, you are accepting the orange bags and the yogurt, the milk cartons and the yogurt containers. Those are being sent to end markets. Those are not going to landfill in any respect.
Correct, absolutely right now.
And then tell me a little bit about the statement that, you know, you do have some contamination, like all processors do, I think. Because unfortunately, folks don't always take the time to to separate things and clean clean them before they do recycle. So I understand that happens. And you said about under, under ten percent of that is contaminated and probably does go to landfill. Tell me about the paper, though. You said, you said something I don't think I've heard before, where you said you don't mind if the paper is wet. I think the current situation right now with our green bins, which we don't appreciate, is they do get wet sometimes. And then that paper does get taken to landfill, I think, and isn't really processed. So tell me about the difference that you're talking about with wet paper.
Yeah, I can't, I can't comment to what's currently being processed and what's currently the issue with wet paper or not. I can only comment on what we do. And wet paper, wet cardboard, wet fiber in general, has never caused us any issues. Never. So we've processed for four and a half years, even when we just had commercial, the same way we're doing it now. And if it gets wet, it gets wet. We still process it. We still bail it up. We still ship it off. So and our end markets have never cared. The only thing that they've ever said to us is, hey, your moisture is a little bit too much, so we deduct a half of a ton off of the sales. That's it. I mean, that that that's, in in all reality, it's just water weight that they won't pay us for. And so for us, it's never become an issue, and and I don't see with the stream we're currently getting with residential that that would ever become an issue.
Okay. And I did tour the site as recently as three hours or maybe four hours ago now. And I did have some site questions, but I see Mr. Palermo's after me, and since it's his district, I'm sure he'll probably ask most of the questions I'm going to ask. So I'll let him address those. Mr. Gubels, if you would, I'd also like your take on that wet paper question I just asked.
Lance, here's my hide. You can call me up those energy bags that you say you have not called us on. Dale Gubels, twelve eleven Cork Drive, Papillion. It is a problem, because in the residential mix, wet paper is going to stick, as Councilwoman Melton mentioned, to the containers. And if you're going to try to sort wet paper from the containers with a single fiber screen, those containers will go out with the paper. The end markets have a for paper, are very stringent now about the contaminants that they allow in the paper. Because they don't want to pay for plastic. They don't want to pay for plastic bags, whatever, that will stick to the paper. If the paper goes over the line, which it will as well, because once it sticks to these containers, it makes them heavier, and the paper will slide along with the containers. To pick material off the line manually from the the other types of material is very challenging. And when you have that coming down the line as quickly as what it needs to in order to get through the tons that come in daily, people are grabbing and they're grabbing quickly. That paper then becomes a contaminant for the plastic bottles or the aluminum cans or the tin cans. So, having the material dumped outside will be a huge problem for Mr. Brown and his operation. He may not have experienced that so far because he hasn't done that much in the way of residential recycling. Commercial recycling, he is right in that with cardboard, which has been his specific material, his primary material that he's gone after, he is absolutely right. You can bail that up when it's wet. The mill, every mill that we work with, and I'm sure it's same for him as well, he mentioned, you might get a downgrade because they measure for the moisture content. They actually have probes that go into the paper. And if it is over, I believe, 5%, you get a downgrade on that load. And they'll deduct for that. So, it's very much an issue. And I'd be very concerned about the comment, again, that if the markets are low for a material type, such as three-through-sevens, then it justifies going into the residential stream, which is what I heard earlier. If that is true, then the operation, which does not have any allocation in the plan to pull off three-through-sevens, which would have to be done by hand, I get that, which is why we have an optical sorter to make it possible to pull that out. But that material, we, there is a market for it. We've been selling it for the last several years, and we've gotten anywhere from $20 to $40 a ton. Not a great deal of money, but on the other hand, it was part of the, the RFB. And if it's in the RFB, we had to allot for the fact that that is the material that the city wants to recycle.
Okay. I know at times you've had a mountain of cardboard out there because of the, because of the market for cardboard not performing well. But that hasn't been an issue when it gets wet, like you said, because that hasn't been an issue with the markets when, when you are able to ship. I don't think Mr. Brown times the markets. It sounds like he has a come in and going. So, that might not be a concern. But the paper thing does concern me. So, when you get, when you get wet paper right now, what do you, what do you do with it?
Well, we try to do, because we are servicing the entire area. And most of the area has gone over to carts, littered carts. So, our skid loader operator will try to mix the two together to dry it out, if you will. And then, we actually have three fiber screens-
And it all goes inside right away?
All goes inside. The first fiber screen is sized to pull off cardboard, which is a simple matter of sizing, quite honestly. Cardboard is generally large. It's heavier. That pulls off there first. But during that process, it's done with these shafts with large discs. And they're spinning, and they're popping it up in the air, and everything else is falling back down. Cardboard slides off. It goes to another one, a newspaper screen. The newspaper screen does the same type of thing, but it's set up slightly differently. Because the, again, you're dealing with a different type of paper. Everything else continues to fall back and goes into our building, further off the tip floor, into the building, to a third screen, which the industry didn't have when we started. But it came out about six years ago, maybe a little longer. This ballistic screen does one final sort on the remaining paper. And, and that can include, again, newspaper, mainly inserts. It can be magazines. It's a smaller-sized material.
So, you try and screen it out, and you try and dry it to be sold. If it can't be dried and sold, are you landfilling that?
No. No, sir.
What do you do with it?
That, that paper, then, goes through our system. And because we are doing all those processes, we've mitigated the amount of paper that gets over to our container line. And then, our production manager has come up with a very innovative approach. After the plastics have been sorted with the optical sorter and the eddy current and the overhead magnet, and with people who are pulling things off to make sure that we get to the quality control that we need in those commodities, he's been running it back around to our floor to run it through a, a second time. And that gives it time to dry, gives it time to go through that whole process again. So, we have greatly reduced the amount of material that, wet paper, that ends up going to landfill.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tyler, maybe just two more questions for you, then I'll turn it over to somebody else here for a little bit, too. I guess your take on the wet paper issue, that, that was a new one to me, that some wet paper does get recycled. Although, it sounds like First Star tries its best to dry it and not have that occur, or not have anything go to landfill. Your analysis of that?
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. For that, I, I would think it would be best to hear from Mr. Brown and how he deals with it in markets and what he can do to broker that material. So, I think that would best come from Mr. Brown on, on the issues related to how they handle the different, the moisture content of the material. Because, yes, this is something that we've talked to Dale about over the years, about how, how to compensate for that because of how his operations handles that. And Mr. Brown assured us that he had a way to deal with that. And he did speak about, you know, the, it's, it's more of an issue on the cardboard side, but he'll be separating the cardboard from everything else. So, that's one way he can handle it in, in his own operations. So, I think that that could be best answered by Mr. Brown and his material and broker.
Okay.
While, while I am at the podium, and if you would allow me, there, there are some things that I would like to maybe correct if I get the chance. And I, I will be very brief.
Okay.
Okay.
Give us a speed round.
Sure. Okay. So, the verification process that some of questions, that'll be the same issues and concerns that we would have with anyone. And I just wanted to make, make that point on the verification process. We were asked if we talked to Bellevue. We did. Epiphany Ramos, we've talked to along the lines about what they're dealing with, issues they're dealing with. How should we address that in our contract? So, that's an issue we dealt with. I would ask Hillside or Veritas to visit the operations now and not rely on what they saw three years ago. And he's welcome to have that visit at his operations. And again, as far as the energy bag, just to reiterate, I actually had a conversation, I don't have the name, but I can get you the name, but he's the sustainability officer from Reynolds who contacted me the other day. And I assured him that whoever the provider was for this contract, we would continue to work with the energy bag. So, I just wanted to make a few clarifications there.
Thank you. My last question for you is, what's before us today, I want people to understand, is just the administration's selection of a contract to Nebraska land. The decision to the city council is to approve that or not approve that. We, as a city council, don't get to select or, or decide how to do that differently next week when we have a vote on this. So, my question to you is, obviously, if this contract is accepted and approved, it goes into effect and it starts January 1st, correct?
That, that is correct. There, there are provisions in the contract where we made, and this, we made this very clear because in the interest of fair competition, we didn't want to necessarily have the incumbent to have an unfair advantage over someone that might be coming in. So, we, we require for the provider of the contract to be able to handle the materials, all materials 100% day one, January 1st. We do not require for him to have all of his operations in place. So, we do allow for time to get a scale in place. And we do allow for time if he's getting his warehouse in place and working on some of those things, that those provisions are in the contract to allow for time after January 1 to meet his operational plan. But at January 1, day 1, he has to figure out how to handle that material if the operational plan is still in work.
So, if it be in almost October, there is some time, some time sensitivity here-
That's correct.
-for a new vendor. If this was not approved next week, my understanding of what would happen is there, there is no contract in place then. The Public Works Department and the mayor can decide whether to go back and select a different vendor or handle things in a different fashion. Can you explain what those alternatives would be at that point?
I, so, I, I think the city clerk was gonna help us a little bit with this answer. And my understanding, and we might get some help from the law department as well. But that would go back to the departments for a recommendation. And we would recommend a different contract. Or we, I think we have the ability to recommend the same contract for your consideration. I'm gonna need some help from the law department on that one.
Good. I'm Mr. Indabush.
Bernard Indabush, Deputy City Attorney. There's no question, as you pointed out, the issue, the issue before you is the contract with Nebraska land. If you would choose, vote against it, it would go back to the administration. They could certainly make another recommendation and come forward with another item. There are some city council rules about how quickly they might be able to, if they came back with the exact same contract. They may change the term, change the contractor. Frankly, maybe they could choose to rebid it. There's any number of options that they would have. Obviously, if they would choose the last option, you'd end up having the question about what you would do with recyclables after the end of the term of the current contract. But that would be an issue that would have to be addressed. So, as a practical matter, if those contracts were denied, you would have all those options.
Thank you. And that's my understanding, too. And I just wanted to point that out as we have this discussion. And I want to make sure that whatever decision we make, we don't get stuck without having a vendor or for any period of time, taking materials to the landfill, because that would be unacceptable, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tyler, sorry, should've grabbed you before you left. Wearing that carpet out today.
Jim Tyler, Public Works.
So, let me ask you a couple of questions. Even though this bid is 80 pages and we've all been through it numerous times, during this discussion, other questions do come up or things we just didn't know about. I heard earlier that you'd mentioned, did we hire an outside firm for, to observe or go through this contract before it was sent to us?
We, we had, we, we had a small contract with a local consultant to look at the terms of the contract with us. And yes, that was done, the contract itself, not the operations, which was the question this, this morning that I heard.
Okay. Thank you. And tell me, I, I know you mentioned earlier in your statement, the light on 42nd D. You said there was a traffic study done, and it wasn't warranted?
Well, so, so, and, and I'm quoting information that I received from Todd Fitzher and City Traffic Engineer Jeff Rieselman in our brief conversations over lunch. And I'll let Todd expand on this, but they provided me that information. So, Todd.
Thank you.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works.
So, the question was about the light and maybe the last time the traffic study was done to see if it was warranted or not.
We went back to a 2015 traffic count that we had and looked at all the warrants that we have available to us. The signal is not warranted at the intersection. And it is, on average, with other intersections of its kind, for crash history and severity. So, it is not, it doesn't meet the, the crash warrants for a traffic signal either. We took into account the future volume anticipated based on what we've heard with these discussions. And that would not entrip the traffic signal volume warrant either. So, the signal or the intersection, excuse me, would stay the way it is without anticipated concerns for crashes or delays.
Okay. Thank you. And another question along those lines. The intersection's busy. We all know it is. There's a lot of fast food. You're coming off the interstate. F Street has a lot of businesses. But one of the complaints I've heard as well, and maybe you can answer this, is the alternative route is to come off of F Street for these big trucks in a residential area where they shouldn't be, whether it's 38th, 39th, whatever the streets they take. Has Public Works, as part of their checklist of this contract, gone through and maybe thought about implementing more signs to advise trucks that you're not supposed to drive in here? Or what, how did that work?
Well, there's a number of ways to handle trucks that are using routes that they shouldn't be. One is through signage. The other, and probably more effective way, is through enforcement. Once these drivers, and it's typically the same drivers using the same routes over and over again, would be encouraged through the methods we just discussed, to use D Street. D Street is designed for trucks. That's, it does have residential on one side. But it's, it's designed for trucks, and there's numerous users that use that route to the east to access 42nd Street. And obviously, we would encourage continued use of that route.
Okay. And, and I agree. But as we tell people who come up for a liquor license, the Omaha Police Department is not your personal security. I, I wouldn't assume that if we award this contract in Nebraska land, that OPD should be their personal directors in the neighborhood. If we're gonna award this contract, we need to make sure it's perfectly clear that the providers that come here take the right route. We know D Street is equipped, and I'm sure poured deep enough for the, the traffic it handles, even with the small percentage that we may gain. But tell me, from the Public Works standpoint, of if we know we're gonna get to, up to 23 trucks at one time, and if they all show up at the same time, along D Street, there's residential roads, not including the entrances to the apartments or the businesses along there. Who thought out or who mapped how these trucks would park along F Street so it wouldn't cause the neighborhood disruption?
I don't have a map out of where 23 trucks would park, Councilman. I, I can look into that. But I, I have not looked at where 23 trucks would park. I can put in perspective what 23 trucks is. There's about 3,000 vehicles a day on D Street, east of 42nd Street. So, even if we break that down into peak hours, generally, our peak hour is 10% of our daily traffic. So, that would be 300 vehicles. So, if we add 23 trucks to 300 vehicles, that's still less than a 10% increase. But specifically, where 23 trucks are going to park, I don't have that information.
And I would agree as well. 30 trucks along this area that are moving and continue to move is probably not a big increase to the neighborhood. But trucks that are waiting to enter or exit or weigh or dump does create a problem. So, I, I think the rest of the questions I would have would be for Mr. Tyler. Thank you, Mr. Fitzher.
Thank you.
Jim Tyler, Public Works.
So, same question to you. Public Works has looked at this. There's logistics that surround this location. And one of the concerns for me is obviously, as I've already pointed out, there's a way in and a way out. And it seems that randomly, trucks choose to take another route. But since the hours are the hours, and we know that probably from past experience, from our previous provider, we know when the trucks are gonna be there. So, I'm sure somebody from Public Works has, with their checkbox, went down there and said, hey, from 11 to 2, we're gonna have 20-some trucks that would be parked waiting to enter, scale, dump, scale, exit. Tell me how that's possible from 39th and D to 42nd D?
Yeah. So, I'm gonna help, have to get back to you on this answer. We actually started to not coordinate this effort through Nebraska land. But we started to discuss with FCC on the routing of their trucks and how it may work in this area. So, I'm gonna have to get back to you because we discussed the fact that it is a, an industrial area with a residential area right next to it, and that we cannot impact the traffic there. So, we'll continue to work with FCC and Nebraska land on a traffic plan. And yes, we do understand, a majority of those trucks will be coming in during a peak hour. So, we'll address that issue, working both with Nebraska land and FCC, who, that'll be a majority of those additional trucks, on some type of traffic management plan that will make sure that a certain number of trucks is in that neighborhood and no more at a certain time. And they, they can do that with their operations.
And, and I know that's not an easy question, because obviously, peak time also means lunch lines for the neighboring fast food businesses, which also increases traffic. But I would assume that if you sent this contract forward to us, that that is one of the first things you would have looked at?
And, and we began to discuss this with FCC and their operations. And we'll continue to work on that with their side. And we'll work on that with coordinating with the other trucks coming in. Okay? Because, because, yes, we, we were very concerned. I was reaching out on the traffic to our traffic division with questions prior to any questions came from you. So, we, we have these concerns. We understand. We did not fully address them for you for this public hearing. But any questions that you have prior to the vote, we will assure you that we work with Nebraska land. We will work with FCC. We will work with everyone involved with the additional trucks in that- We will work with FCC. We will work with everyone involved with the additional trucks in that neighborhood to make sure that the traffic impact allows, is coordinated with the residential area next door. And we clearly understand. It's gonna be, there's gonna be a little bit of a rush in the morning if FCC is allowing for them trucks to return to the shop and dump in the morning. The big rush is gonna be at 4:30 in the afternoon, and we're gonna have to work with both companies to understand how to accommodate that so we don't impact the neighborhood. We'll continue to answer any questions and get you information as we get it.
And I think you went into my next part of that rush. Nebraska Land's rush is also the rush of the neighbors trying to get out and go to work. And that's why my concern is, yes, this road is approved and that's what it's for, but I don't know if we've thought out them small things that me, as elected, who represents this area, this is my concern, and this is why I ask. So, what would you say from Public Works? You heard Mr. Fitzher say that signs could be looked at, I believe, or maybe we call 911 to police the area for trucks that aren't taking the right route to Nebraska Land. What, I mean, what did you discuss during your Public Works process about traffic in the residential areas?
We'll, we'll, we'll talk to Nebraska Land, and I'm gonna apologize. I'm getting kinda lost in what I've had in discussions with Nebraska Land and with FCC, because we're working with both of them right now. And I know we've talked to FCC about the only trucks that they will have in the neighborhood are the ones serving the neighborhood. Okay, they're gonna use the defined truck route on D. We made that clear in our discussions with FCC. So, we'll continue to work with Nebraska, with Nebraska Land to make sure that that's a commitment from any truck coming in, okay? That only the trucks serving the neighborhood, which should be one of our contracted vehicles, will be in that neighborhood. All other trucks will enter in on 42nd and D.
And I appreciate that commitment from Public Works and from Nebraska Land, but can you tell me, have, has FCC, the trucks that will be there, actually been to the site yet?
Again, this was, we know they've driven by. We were starting to kinda get them coordinated, but we're kind of in this chicken and the egg to try to make sure that we weren't putting, you know, the cart in front of the horse. And so, there have been limited, but not, I think, the type of discussions you're asking for. And we will absolutely make sure, you know, that we were comfortable with the flow of traffic that we were presented. We will make sure that FCC is comfortable, and we've said this before today. We want to make sure they are able to comment on the traffic flow into, inside and out of the facility.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please. Sorry. Mr. Fitzher.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. You kind of alluded to capacity and what can this road handle. Just in general, a two-lane road, which, which D Street is, is designed to accommodate 10 to 12 vehicle, 10 to 12,000 vehicles a day. We have about 3,000 on it today. So, from a capacity standpoint, we don't have a huge concern that this road is going to clog up and not be able to move traffic. Specifically with trucks and certain times, yes, we understand the concern there and wanna, wanna work that out. But I just wanted to present those numbers to the council that this road is in no way in danger of being overcapacity or needing to be widened or anything like that. It really is more a coordination effort on timing and parking and queuing and things like that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And my comment on that is, yes, we have different roads that have different traffic counts, but the traffic count doesn't include vehicles stopping for a long period of time. That would change the dynamics of the count, and that's what I'm talking about. We're not gonna have trucks that are driving by the speed limit, which we know a majority of that industrial area would go into the first business. And there's a few others down there, and there's even a larger one down the way. So, we know if these trucks are under flow, yes, we have a lot more room for more tenants. My question is, because it's a public road, for anybody to park there, that means there could be vehicles there. There's no parking along D Street. That if there's cars parked there, maybe in the morning from the residents that live nearby, and now you have brand-new FCC trucks that are not small that pull in, you're gonna have a traffic problem. And that's just my part of it. It's not that, you probably didn't know that, but when you come up and give me a traffic count and how much room there is there, yeah, you're right, but not with vehicles stopped. So, Mr. Brown?
Lance Brown, Nebraska Land Recycling.
I'm calmed down now. I'm better. Thanks for coming up. You know, recycling is the solution here, right, for solid waste? So, I want to thank you and Mr. Goobles for being here. You're both right in this business. This is what you love. There's, there's no doubt, the dedication and work ethic you have to pick up the city's recyclables and hopefully, you know, do your small part of me making it simple of, they come and get dropped, and you sort them, and you sell them. There is no doubt in my mind, you could get rid of them at the end market. My, my problem, and I said this before, because I showed up when you were awarded the contract. I introduced myself. This is what we do. I said, here's how this works. You know, welcome to the big time, right? You've been awarded a city contract. Now, there's a part of this. There's a part of me driving by that day, me driving by two days later, me driving by this previous weekend, and me driving by today with a couple of my colleagues. I thought that I would show up and things would be sparkling, and they weren't. I mean, it's, it's almost like a slap in the face for recycling. We, we didn't hire an outside firm for a $20 million contract, but we hired and approved an outside firm for a Parks Director for a couple hundred thousand dollars. No offense to Parks, that's a very important spot, but think about that. That's what we've put into recycling in this city, and we just went through it with solid waste. We picked the highest bidder because we could not fail. And I was that person, right? I was on that side. Councilmember Paul is exactly right. That other company, who, now the rules are reversed, who knows? So, it's discouraging to me to see Public Works so quickly. And nothing against you or your company, because like I said, I know you can do the job, but there's other parts. But it's, it's like, it's so quickly reversed that now, lowest and best, that's the way we're going. Do we care about recycling? Because we know with these carts that are being delivered, the amount's gonna double. I'm sure there will be a curve and it will lessen, but it's gonna double. So, when I talk about logistics of the area and your building, I mean, you had some weeds to pull, sure, small for some people, but not for me, not for a $20 million contract. The parking lot, there was litter and debris everywhere. It should've been picked up. I shouldn't have had to drive by that, because you know what happens? I have my constituents that reach out to me, and I'm like, no, he could do it. He's gonna get this cleaned up. He's gonna hire employees. But it wasn't done. This is the time it has to be done. So, tell me, if you're awarded this contract, and I'll tell you, employees are hard to find. We know. We, we all know if you own a business, employees are very hard to find. We have, we have a new waste hauler in town who's gonna swallow up a lot of employees, hopefully, because them are the people that are bringing you the recyclables. But tell me, what, what are you gonna do for the neighborhood for litter, debris? There's probably not much odor, but there could be. But tell me what you're gonna do different?
Yeah, absolutely. Good points. You're not the first one to bring that to my attention, as far as once the public got word that we may be getting the city contract. I've had several residents either call me, email me, swing by, or whatever. And I'll give you the same assurance that I've already given them is, when we first started, we didn't have a lot of litter blowing into the street, so we did it like once a week. We would just go out there and clean up anything that was on the street. And then we had one complaint in four and a half years of, hey, there's some paper that's blowing. Can you pick it up more often? And I said, absolutely. We'll just do it daily. Takes us five or 10 minutes. It's not, it's not a big time-consuming ordeal to go pick it up. And then I reassured the residents. I said, if we get this contract, we're just going to do it every shift, which is our two shifts, and as needed. I mean, so you're doing two for sure, which I think is plenty. But on some windy days, if it's blowing out and we need to pick it up when we go out to lunch or take our break or whatever, that, those are very simple fixes as far as the litter part. I guess I want to address, there's a difference between the littering on the street and outside of our fence, and then on the inside fenced area where the material is dropped. There may be a lot of material dropped inside our fenced area that may look like, oh, man, there's litter everywhere. There's boxes everywhere. But that's actually the material we will process throughout the day. So, we can have 60 tons currently dropped at our facility and processed through that one day. So, at 2:00 in the afternoon, there may be a big pile of material either under the awning or slightly outside if we were behind for the day, but by 10:00 at night, it could be completely gone. So, so there's, there's that. It's part of the process to be inside the gates, and that's what we're working with. And then the litter and stuff outside. The only thing that's ever been addressed to me is the litter outside. And I fully take responsibility of, yes, we need to pick up every single piece of anything that blows outside on the street, because the residents don't need to see that. The other point that I'd like to bring up is the logistics of our current operation. I can only predict and forecast what additional 2023 trucks would be as far as the traffic flow, parking on the street during rush hours and stuff like that. We have 18 trucks that currently come and dump to us between the hours of 9:00. Some are done at 9:00, and then some are done at like 2:00. So, in there, we have 18. And very rarely is any truck sitting out and waiting to have enough space to get into our lot to dump. So, the only thing we're adding is a scale. And a scale is drive on, red light turns to green light, there's the number, and drive off. So, 10 seconds maybe at the most. So, 20 seconds total would be added, and we're already doing it. So, for me, I really can't see a huge problem with trucks backing up in the street, waiting to come in and dump, especially with all of our semi-trailers that would be waiting for us to load them because of our shipping. Now, we're not there anymore. So, there's your six or seven semi-trailers that maybe have, in the past, caused parking issues as they're waiting. So, as far as the traffic and the litter, I think we have a very, very solid plan to be able to handle the additional 60 tons a day.
Okay, tell me about the neighborhood associations nearby and maybe the different groups in the area that you've reached out to on being awarded a contract.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. In four and a half years, we, we only had the pleasure of meeting two of our neighbors. One had an issue like week two of us being there about some paper being in his yard. We went and cleaned it up. We said, we'll be on this. Don't worry about it. We haven't heard from him since, so I don't know if that's still an issue with him. And then the other neighbor is directly across from both of our entrances, and he's got this beautiful, nice fence, and he's remodeling his garage and all that stuff. And one day, he came over and all he said was, hey, if these trucks ever like do any damage to this fence, you know, are you gonna take care of it? I said, absolutely. First of all, they shouldn't come near your fence, but if they did, of course, I'll, I'll pay for it, so don't worry about it. And then that made me start thinking, we probably need a second entrance or exit so that they don't have to turn so sharply on the only exit that we had. And so, we added another entrance specifically based on his recommendation. And so, that allows our semi-trailers that we were shipping to go a lot wider and never even have to come close to his fence. So, those are the two that we've addressed in four and a half years. Since this recommendation came out, we've been contacted by Burlington, by South Omaha, by PACE, several other ones. And, and the two things you brought up were pretty much the same thing. It was litter and/or traffic. That was their main concerns. And so, what I've shared with you is exactly what I've shared with them. Litter, zero problem. Don't you worry about that. It'll be picked up daily, if not three or four times a day. And if you ever have an issue, here's my number. Here's my cell number here. I'm here every day. And if it's me going out and picking it up, I already do that. So, I have no problem with that. The traffic side of it, I can only count for the number of trucks that we have in that area, plus the 20 that may be coming. And I'm there every day, all day, and we are a very small percentage of industrial trucks that come through that street. So, Conrico has over 400 trucks coming down that area. Field Paper has 20, you know? So, I don't think our traffic will cause any additional congestion that's already, if that's a concern, that's already down there.
Okay, well, I mean, thank you for that. It's double-edged sword here for me. I mean, you're a business in my area. According to what you have here, you're gonna have to add employees. That's gonna be tough, but this is what we want. We want businesses to grow, but then also, I have the residential area that is the other curb. And don't get me wrong, I will always pick the residential areas, especially that neighborhood there that is involved and strong. We can't have a decline in people being upset of traffic or trash or whatever it is. We're gonna have to work together if this contract's awarded to make sure that doesn't happen.
And one more point I'd like to make about the neighborhood associations is Burlington, South Omaha, Neighborhood Alliance, and PACE. We never had any open communication up to this point. I don't, I didn't know they were out there. They didn't know I was there. And since then, we've actually, now we have open lines. They have, we have each other's cell phones. We text each other. And we'll actually have that almost open line of communication nonstop now, because there's things we're gonna be doing together, such as recycling events and trash pickups and donations to the PACE thing that's going on in December. Just a lot of different things that we've never had before. And without this recommendation of award, I don't know if we ever would've had that open communication. So, I'm actually pretty grateful that that has happened, because I think that relationship will, will, will continue to grow and even get better as, the longer we're there.
So, tell me, if you were awarded this contract, how, how much would your company grow percentage-wise? Not just volume, but employees. How many do you have now? How many will you add? What is, what is the addition?
Yeah, we run about 30 employees right now on, on a shift and a half with a skeleton. We'd be bringing on 20 to 22 is my target number that I want. We could probably do it for less. But that's the number that I will start with. Like I said, we're gonna add a different warehouse shipping just for logistics purposes. And then, you know, like our volume is currently at 25,000 tons right now. That we do 7,000 of residential commingled, and if we get 20 additional, then don't quite double, but, but it would be, it would be right around doubling our, our company.
Okay. And just so you're aware, just a few months ago, we had a contract in front of us, and it was denied because the company, we didn't believe, could double overnight to get the job done. Recycling's not gonna end on my watch, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree with me. So, good luck. I'll let you know if I have any other questions. Thank you.
Can I make one quick comment to that?
Yes, go.
The, the capacity of what we're doing isn't doubling, so I should probably clarify that. We can do what we're doing right now in a 10-hour shift. So, if we get double the amount, we're only at 20 hours. We're only at two shifts. So, we would have four hours a day and weekends. So, it's not like we're gonna get anywhere near capacity anytime soon.
I would, I would disagree. That little junk green tub that blows away compared to my cart that I get that's covered, you're gonna double. So, you're gonna double in capacity you have. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Todd, if I could start with you, please? I think you might be the appropriate person. Mr. Hahn, who testified earlier, mentioned something about a new curb cut. Are you aware of that, or can you?
That's the first I've heard of. We can check into that tomorrow and find out. Sure.
All right. Thanks.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. I forgot to identify myself.
Okay, thanks, Todd. And then, I don't know if this might be for Director Stube or Director Curtis, but I'm gonna use Mr. Brown's figure. If, if he says that his, his net is about $75 a ton, based upon $120 of what his proposal is, that would leave about $45. that would leave about forty-five dollars. That seems to be, that's the, the city share, if you will. Correct?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I probably either defer to Mr. Key or Mr. Curtis to go into those numbers, so.
Either one?
You're specific how the market share works.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's more about, come on, if, if you wouldn't mind, Jim. And if it has to be someone else, I'll, I'll ask a question. You tell me who needs to answer. But if, if my, again, my math is, if, and I'm going off what Mr. Brown said earlier. He's seventy-five, the bid's one-twenty, so forty-five would be, if you would, the city share.
The, forgive me if I mess this up because it's, it's a little complicated. But the, you know, the, the, the market share that, that the formula is based on varies according to the markets. So, so he's put in a bid that has covered his base operations, which he assumes is seventy-five dollars. And one to be able to cover what that potential market share is back to the city. So I believe, I believe that's what you're asking. And, and what we see, um, we did analysis of what those market shares are. And we've seen that between, I think Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-seven at the low and maybe forty-five, fifty on the high end. You know, so depending on what the market share is on our indices, not what they get, but depending on what that market share is on the indices, that determines what he has to return back to us.
Okay, so the, I heard maybe my upper limit was forty-five or... So let's use forty-five just for the sake of argument here.
Sure.
So based upon twenty thousand tons annually, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. And, and, you know, obviously if it's lower than that, it's, you know, let's say it's in a range from seven hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars back to the city. Where does that revenue go? And maybe this is when Mr. Curtis comes in.
I, I believe it'd be general fund, but I'll, if Mr. Curtis wants to expand on that, I'll let him.
Okay, I got a thumbs up to say general fund just so he doesn't have to walk all the way down there. I'll take general fund as the answer. So I, and thank you, that's, I'm done with my questions. The only, I'll, I'll just make the comment. I said this at pre-council this morning. I said it last year when we were going through this process. And, and I really wish this would have been included as, as part of the, the pack, the bid package that went out. From a, from a budgeting standpoint, to me, it seems to make more sense that really how we should have structured this is that the city goes out and asks for the recycling company to give us a bid. Their, it's their capital, it's their equipment, it's their investment, it's their risk. And rather than have the city play along with the fluctuations of, of market, I think from a budgeting standpoint and running the city efficiently, it would make more sense to me to ask for just a flat rate with, or, you know, with your adjustments or your bumps per year. But not have the, the city share in those ups and downs of the expenses. Because at, at the end of the day, it might be seven hundred thousand to the good. It might be nine hundred thousand to the good. There have been times where it has not been to the good at all. And just from, from running the city standpoint, I would think that it would make more sense for all parties involved had we at least had that as an option. And I know I'm, I'm saying something. I can't unwind the clock. It's, it's not something that, that, that we can address at this point. But maybe in the future, it's something we, we should probably consider. You, you want to, only, only if it's supporting what I say.
I, I will try to respond and it's going to be the same argument I've stated before, but I, I just, just want to try to make my point. Oh, and, and we, we did, we sought national input on this. You know, this was a formula that was provided to us to be able to try to share the risk. And our concern about just saying, give us a flat rate and it's on you to, hey, if you can reap those profits if they're there and, and if they're not there, that's your risk. You know, our concern is that puts us at risk of the volatility of the market. If, and, and we're talking about wide swings and, and we're talking about people that know a lot more about this, but market prices going from thirty dollars a ton to a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. And there's no way that a bid without a market share can predict that. So that, that's why we structured the bid the way we did. It allows the processor to share in the risk when those markets go good or bad. And that's, that's the best explanation I can give, and, and I understand we may disagree on that. As far as the budgeting process, we understand what that market risk is. We will set our budgets accordingly. So if we get a bit of two-point-three, that's our budget. We hope to get something below that budget. So that's how we work.
But we, we can also be budgeting for a lower number knowing.
Understood.
We'll, we'll agree to disagree, but I, I think it's just something we should consider going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have somebody from Finance come down? I've seen your hand go up, Mr. Curtis, so I figured you wanted to say something.
Steve Curtis, Finance Director.
Mr. Curtis, thanks for being here. We know that the mayor has sent us this proposal and it has the seal of approval from Finance and Public Works. Tell me a little bit about your vetting process as you look through this recycling contract and, and what have you? And I'm asking because we have a provider now, so we know the job can get done. And, and the, and the, the bond is less than if it's not performed. Meaning if Nebraska Land decided to say, hey, you know, we're done, didn't work out, sure, they lose that bid bond, but it's still not enough for the second lowest bid to provide. So tell, tell me what you do to make sure that if this contract goes through from the finance side, to give us some assurance.
Well, would it be instructive or would it be interested in hearing kind of the similarities or dissimilarities between this one?
Maybe like just the, the shorter version of the boxes you check.
Okay. Well, I know there were questions too about how this was different when we looked at here versus West Central. Is that?
You could go into that, sure.
Well, so here are the two things that, that we look for is, does it seem reasonable that they could perform the contract based on what we could see? And what are the implications if they can't perform? And so those are the two things that we kind of look at. And if you think about West Central, and I don't want to dwell on that one because it's, it's a good local company. But I know, I know Rich, but Paul's had some questions about that. And so the only dissimilarities would have been this, is that there was a, there were consultants in both cases that looked at both of these contracts or both of the responses. And in the case of West Central, there were questions about, is this lower and out of range of what we think is possible? So that question lingered. Uh, we know they weren't located here. They were hundreds of miles away and that was a concern. There were some large financing risks inherent in their bid. And if they couldn't perform, that one became a public health crisis. So if you look at the lack of collections, it's a public health crisis. If, if you look at a recycling contract where it's primarily the processing of it, uh, in this case, the consultants looked at these businesses, that these appear to be in range and are reasonable. Their, their processing is already here, so they didn't have to come to a new city hundreds of miles from where they were and start a brand-new operation. And there isn't really that same health crisis risk if you can't collect the trash versus if you can't process recyclables. So with that said, what we did in this case was Andrew Brad, who's also here and would be happy to talk to you as well, uh, went out to their operation, looked at their physical plant, looked through their financials, and he and I both went through their financials. And we didn't see anything that said this company can't produce what they claim they can produce. And in their experience over the last year or so, they brought on some other large contracts that have done this successfully and have kept their suppliers, their end-users pretty happy from what we could tell. So we didn't see any red flags. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that's, I just, you know, we, we, a lot of questions for Public Works, but there's, there's three components of why we have this in front of us. And I wanted to make sure that Finance did their due diligence and had their boxes all checked as well, so. And, and you're right, right? We already know garbage is different sitting on your curb than recyclables. And nobody wants to say it, and close your ears if you don't want to hear it. But the truth is, if the recyclable shut down for a little bit, then they end up in the landfill. So I understand that part. But the part I want to make sure is that doesn't happen, that we have a provider ready to go regardless. And I'm not saying who, who can and who can't, but I wanted to make sure that Finance did their part and, and made sure the, the banks were on the up and up and, and they were able to proceed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Mr. Brown, would you come up, please?
Lance Brown, Nebraska Land Recycling.
When did you have the new driveway put in?
That was probably three, four months ago.
Who did the work?
Uh, I was just trying to think of that. It was a concrete company. I'll have to, I'll have to pull the invoice and see exactly who did that.
Do you have a right-of-way curb cut permit?
What's that?
Did you get a curb cut permit from the city before you did the work?
That I don't know. The, the construction company was responsible for any type of permits that they needed for their...
Actually, the property owner's responsible for that.
All right, well, in our contract, it said that they were going to get all this permit, so I, I don't have an answer to that right now.
This raises a serious issue because if you did not have authorization from the city to tap into and create a new curb cut and therefore a new driveway to your property, that's a big problem for a couple of reasons. One, it, it shows that the type of business practice of the city that you already said, that you delegate or pawn off to others that which is your responsibilities as the user of the property. Did you get permission from your landlord?
Yeah.
Who's your landlord?
Univar.
It's, it, the other concern it would raise is that now in retrospect, will this arduous process and time-consuming process in engineering in many cases that's involved with others who ask for curb cuts? If we cut corners in this case, for someone who's a putative contractor with the city, is, is the Public Works Department now going to turn a blind eye and open a slippery slope to, well, we'll approve something for you that we wouldn't necessarily approve for someone else? And if you didn't get a permit and Public Works does that for you, I'm afraid that's an inescapable eventuality that others who now want curb caps, cuts that shouldn't go where they're proposed to be or are questionable for where they're proposed to be or are more in terms of how many ingress and egress points are allowed and the distances between them. That creates all kinds of headaches, not just for the city, but for property, other property owners and, and users in the city, contractors, engineers. Because they'll all point to your case. Well, you did it for Nebraska Land. Where they were only a few feet apart, why wouldn't you do it for us? See what that could do?
Yeah.
But on a whole nother aspect of it is your site, which I too went and visited today, is so compact that I don't see how it works, even with two driveways because of the size of the work area, given what's coming as an eventuality if this contract were awarded. But if there's only one driveway, it makes it even more problematic. But let's just say you get the contract, putting aside these other considerations. And you have these additional trucks that are going to be coming and they stack because of the scale. If there's a truck on a scale, that's the thing that they do when they come in, you said. They pull up on the scale. I don't know how that's going to fit and not have stacking on this small little site. And where are they going to stack on this narrow residential street? They're going to stack on that South Omaha Trail that Papio NRD, a board member, Jim Thompson, and, and his crew and it was Commissioner Board Member Fowler, who's a South Omaha member. I was at the ribbon cutting for that thing, just a block or two west of your place. And I've ridden that trail with my wife and I've seen the kids on it and the young families on it and the strollers on it, the bikes on it. Those trucks are going to, they're going to want to get off the street. And since the trail is right up to the curb, that, I think that's where they're likely to go. And then they're going to be blocking the trail. I don't know if the trail is constructed to the same engineering standards that city roads are in terms of the concrete and its depth and reinforcement. But that, to me, is another concern. So I think, and we'll get to whether I think that, that doubling in size is something your company could do. But that, that to me raises concerns above which and beyond which we've heard, and I, I'm trying not to duplicate the things that have already been talked about. But that's a big issue. The trash, that was outside your gate today. Rather voluminous amount immediately outside and to the east of your east entrance. And is that the new one, the east entrance?
Yes, correct, yes.
So right by your new entrance is all this litter which is on your side of the street, which is in an abundant amount, has not been cleaned up, at least not today, when I was there. But another thing you said was, this material comes in, it's sorted, it's baled, and it goes out. You don't keep it around. Remember that testimony?
Correct.
Well, I saw several semi-trailers that were, had open trailer doors that I could see in that looked like they had been parked there for a while, that were full of corrugated box bales that were just sitting there. And I'm, it just raises questions in my mind is the speed with which things are processed or can be processed or the capacity to process. And if you are so speedy and you're just shipping it off to Centennial, Colorado, or wherever they're telling you the market is that they brokered, is that really under this type of proposed contract in the best interests of the city? Because Mr. Goobles at First Star has the capacity to store and weather variations in the market so that he can get the best price for the commodity on the market and release inventory when it's in the best interest and most profitable to his company and therefore under this contract to the city? I don't know, as I see it, that your company, in terms of your approach philosophically that you shared, is something that is in align with this partnership, right or wrong, that Councilmember Harding has had some concerns about, the structure. I too share some of those concerns. Not necessarily in the way the contract is formulated, but your philosophical company approach to releasing goods into the market as expeditiously as you can, even if wet. So why don't you, before I go on to other areas, why don't you talk about the things that I've raised so far to try to address them if you could?
Absolutely. Let, let, let's...
Let's talk about the, the site visit that you saw. I don't know what time you were there. Currently, we run an eight o'clock cleanup and a two o'clock cleanup, so 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And so I know it was done at eight o'clock, because that's a policy we have, and I know it'll be done at two o'clock. What time you were there, I don't know. Could some of the trailer or the haulers came out and pulled some of their material with them, and we, it's by the fence? Absolutely. I, I wasn't there, but the constant cleaning up of what we do is, is, is just a labor piece of it, that if we need to increase, then we would increase. The trailers that you had talked about, they're, those are actually customer trailers that we spot at customers that bale the material. They actually bale the material, and we just go and get the trailers and bring them back. So we don't process any of those bales that you saw. Those will just be transloaded onto another shipping container when it goes out. So they're just sitting there stage waiting for us to transload them. So those are the types of trailers that-
What do you, what do you mean by transload? I don't, did you, did I hear you say that customers bring trailers that are already loaded with bales that they've procured elsewhere, or they've done themselves?
Correct. Let's, um, just use any type of Richmond Gordman, their warehousing. They bale their own cardboard, and if we buy it from them, we'll go and we'll pick up the trailer and bring it back to our facility. And then when we sell it, we'll just take those bales out and put them onto another shipping container that leaves. So that's part of what we are looking at moving to a different warehouse, so I don't have to bring any trailers back to my facility of finished goods. So that's what you would have seen that had finished bales in those trailers. That wasn't what we processed, that there's a difference there. So those are just waiting for a semi-trailer to come pick them up so we can sell them. And then those could be gone in a day or two, or five, or whatever, when the trucking gets there. The rebate aspect is, is a good point that you bring up. It is definitely a business strategy of, can you make the most amount of money for your material you produced? In this contract, however much money or money, money I make or money I lose, based on how I process and when I sell it, has no bearing on the city's rebate amount of money. So we gotta be clear there. It, it has nothing, whether I sell it two years from now for a hundred dollars more, or keep it to three months and lose money on it, that doesn't affect your rebate amount. The, the city gets a flat dollar amount for that material. And, and there, and there are some times where our brokers will tell us, hey, it's the end of the month for the last two days, why don't you wait three days and see what the new pricing comes out? You may make five or 10 more dollars. And so we'll hold on to it for three or four days, and, and we have room to store 20 to 30 loads inside of our facility. We, we've done it before if needed, so we have the capacity to store it inside. That's part of what I want to move to another warehouse, so I have additional space to put it, and that frees up some other operational space that we could use for other things. As far as the traffic, on and off a scale, is seven to 10 seconds?
That's a little optimistic.
No, no, actually, no. It's, we send our-
Pull up, they wait, the truck driver has to come to a complete stop. They have to let the vibration settle, the shift load to end, let the machine weigh and calculate, and then the light change, and then hopefully pull forward. I heard you say back up. I mean, are they gonna actually back up into the street or so? How's that gonna work?
No, they, they would back up on the other way. If, if they want it, if they have to weigh empty, then they would come in from the area they just dropped the weight, and then back up and go out the other exit. But, okay, let's say 15 seconds. I was just using a ran, round number of, it, it doesn't take very long to scale a truck. So for it to continually back up, when you say 20 more trucks are coming to our facility, it's rarely ever at the same time. I mean, I'll be honest, we have trucks dropping right now, we have 18 trucks coming, and they drop between nine and two. And sometimes there's two, or three, or five, or six in our facility, dropping all at the same time, and nothing on our street. So it's not that we can only accommodate one truck dropping in our facility at one given time. We can drop five or six. The scaling aspect would be one at a time, of course. So, so there's a little clarification I wanted to, wanted to put on that. And I think that addressed all the questions or points that you had.
Thank you, yeah, you may sit down. I, I personally, we're gonna have to agree to disagree on the, on the scale, in terms of the capacity, in terms of number of vehicles at a time, and the likelihood for stacking onto D Street. Because even if there's only one truck stacked on D Street, according to the city ordinances, that's unacceptable. There should not be commercial vehicles, or any other vehicles, blocking traffic, stacking on the right-of-way. And that's just not something that's, that's acceptable. We have some issues on that in other areas of the city, and the city, in some cases, has been recently aggressive, and the city's traffic engineer has told me personally in writing and email communication on one recent case, that, that's something that they just don't flex and bend the rules on. You're either blocking traffic, or you're not. I remember another anecdote, the city engineer, Mr. Fister, Fitzher was driving into work one day a few years ago, and there was a delivery truck on Leavenworth blocking, stacked, blocking while making a delivery. Well, that's stacking. Even if it was just a crate of, or a dolly full of milk, it's still unacceptable, because what does that do for the other users of the road, the other cyclists, the other pedestrians? It's just not something we can have. It's a risk for me, given what my assessment is of your operational scale and size and design, that I, I just very uncomfortable with, very uneasy with. And I, I drove around on, I think it was 39th, and I came by on D, and I went up to F, I went east, I looked down, and, and I just know what truck drivers are gonna do. I mean, 42nd and D, I don't know what the police reports, the traffic reports in terms of scale accidents are, but I use that roadway a lot. My primary means of ingress to access the interstate are 42nd and I-80, or 60th and I-80, and it depends upon the time of the day and where I'm going, which one I use. And, and it's frequent to see accidents just south of the intersection of D. I have to confess, you know, if you take a look at me, it might not come as a surprise, but I, I kinda enjoy Taco Bell every once in a while. And there's a Taco Bell right south of 42nd and D, so I go down there quite a bit. And I can tell you time and time again, accessing the Taco Bell, I see at 42nd and D intersection and south, to get in and out of the fast food restaurants, there's, there's metal and plastic and glass debris from the vehicles that have been in accidents there. I mean, that's a regular occurrence. And so what I suspect is gonna happen is because trucks and, truck drivers are really no different than other drivers. They take the pathway of least resistance and maximum personal comfort. And those streets going up to F, and whether it's 38th or 38th Avenue, I forget which was, or 39th, they're gonna become the truck route for a lot of the truck drivers, because of the issues that are up on 42nd and D, primarily in peak hours. There are some times when you see vehicles can't make that turn. And as I said at the pre-council meeting, the city recently, at Public Works, came to us to approve acquisition of a industrial property that Campos Construction used to operate, and then it became, I think, an equipment dealer, what, Case or something? It was just south of the interstate on the east side of 42nd Street. And they agreed as a part of that, that the ingress and egress driveway onto 42nd was so problematic, that as their acquisition came to fruition, they were not gonna use that driveway anymore, because of how problematic that roadway is. Then, coupled with that is, they're gonna redo the bridge over the railroad tracks. Right when this is gearing up, bridge work is, could be a year, it could be 18 months, between structurally breaking down the old bridge and doing the new bridge, and that's gonna be for all of the traffic from the north, which is gonna stack up especially at peak hours. So the site, to me, is very problematic, a big concern. Now let's get to the growth of your, your business. It's a nearly double in size. You know, we, we have a very, we're fortunate on the council to have someone who's passionate and, and interested in his work and serving his constituents, is Councilmember Rich Pauls. The last contract that came before us, there was a small company, and, and I'm forgetting the owner's name, West Central Services, WCS, I think it was, or WCC from Minnesota. And Councilmember Pauls, if you'd yield to a question, could you, would you mind sharing with me his name?
There, there were several people involved.
The owner?
Richmond.
Don Richmond?
Yes.
Thank you. This gentleman, Mr. Richmond, was a really impressive person. He made a compelling case. He had been in the business for decades. He knew waste hauling. He lived waste hauling. He, he built his company from scratch and was having steady growth. And even with all that personal experience and growth and development and knowledge, and all of the things he did to come here to familiarize himself with the market, measuring alleyways with height, vehicles, I mean, driving routes, demonstrating. Mr. Pauls drove up to Minnesota on his own time, on his own dime, to, to check out that company, and came away personally convinced that that person, that company, was capable of performing. And the reaction from the administration and the Public Works Department was, we cannot do this. It's too much of a risk in terms of the capacity and the importance of it. Public health, of course, is a serious issue. In the immediate term, with waste hauling, I would say recycling and, and keeping plastics and, and things like that out of our landfill is a long-term public health concern. You can deal with this problem now, or you can deal with these micro particles that get into our waterways and, and pollute ultimately our most precious resource of water, from which all life depends. And so if Public Works was so adamant about not taking a risk to double the size of a contract with a contractor who so obviously and convincingly demonstrated his capabilities, why, for those of us who are so passionate in our community about our environment and recycling and diverting from the landfill, why would we ever risk failure in that program by the same approximate capacity growth in such a short period of time? Which, by the way, is a fraction of the time to ramp up for this as it was gonna be for the waste hauler. That was gonna be about a year of opportunity time to, to get the equipment they needed and, and the facilities and the people. Here, it's September 30 tomorrow, folks. We're going into the fourth quarter in a couple of days, and, and we hope to have this contract going on the new year. So to me, the, the time, opportunity to ramp up, the risk for capacity growth is just too, too risky, because what happens, as, as so many others said, if this contractor fails and defaults on the collection, we know from experience, the recycle bins are just gonna get added to the collection of the waste hauler, tipped into the back of a, a truck that's going up to Pheasant Point. And to me, that's a big deal, just to risk that. But now, we have other things. We have an existing large local company who is a leader and pioneer in the market, and innovative uses in transforming his product and creating his own market, as you saw today, and wanting to grow, and hopefully in our city. And he's willing to take other forms of, of material that he included in his bid to pursue those things. He has a vision that's demonstrated and evidenced by his practices of sustained capacity and commitment to expanding recycling in our community, not doing what's quickest and cheapest and easiest to turn around to get the materials off-site and somewhere else for someone who will take it, even if refunding on the, on the contamination or the water content. And that's the thing I think we ought to be doing in, in the partners that we have in our city, because, just because we have a landfill out in northwest of Bennington that has about 100 years left in its lifespan, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do for our community to, to fill that thing up, when there's, there's so much opportunity in, in recycling. In, in other communities that don't have the, the luxury of space, they're, they're in many, many, I don't wanna say light years, but as, as a expression, I'll say that, they're light years ahead of us in terms of their community's commitment and the size and scope and scale of their recycle program. And so to me, that's another reason to be concerned about going in the direction that's proposed here, is we have a demonstrated leader in this industry, who has his own company and personal passion and commitment to, to making our, our community's participation and dedication to recycling even more robust than what the contract minimums require for deliverables. So I'd like to bring Mr. Goobles up and, and give Mr. Dobbs an opportunity too. If you heard something that you felt you wanted to rebut, I'll give you that opportunity. But Mr., Mr. Goobles, you know, tell me, you know, you weren't required to bid these other things, what, how is it you decided, I'm gonna do these other things, whether required or not? I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to build a new business and add new jobs and create new products right here in Omaha area?
Dale Goobles, 1211 Cork Drive, Papillion. Thank you, Councilman. The reason we have always advocated to take more materials when we find markets, and if you've ever received an email from me, you may have seen my tagline on my emails, where I say, "Waste need to be redefined as resources that wait for alternative sensible thinking to emerge." And, and of course, that spells out waste. And I did that purposely, because we've gotta stop thinking of these things as waste, because when we start this process to make plastic lumber, we're gonna hire more people. Those are gonna be better paying jobs than what we can afford now. So that's basically the answer to your question. But one of the things that I also wanted to point out, when it is said that, well, you know, there are certain materials that it costs more money to process, and therefore it's better to just let them go to the landfill, I, I think there's so many things wrong with that, from both an environment- I, I think there's so many things wrong with that from both an environmental point of view, but also from an economic point of view. And also I have to agree that the way the RFB was written, it doesn't matter to the city. It, it really doesn't because the city's going to get 60% of an aggregated value of the pure material that comes in. And Mr. Brown is right on that. However, I would argue that a robust recycling program is going to look at, okay, we're going to try and get the best value for this material regardless of what the indexes are saying because we turn around and we offer and provide our 120-some employees bonuses based on the fact that we can show that we're making more money. I would also point out that we offer, um, a pretty generous PTO program. We also have health insurance for our people and we also have a retirement plan and, and contribute to their 401Ks. If we were to rely solely on, um, the employment agencies, I don't believe that is part of their general approach. So, you know, I wanted to say earlier, but then there were so many things that I felt I had to respond to that were said earlier. But ours is the best bid based on the fact that the, uh, scale of our operation is, we didn't build this thing just because, oh, this is, you know, we want to look like we're the best. We did it because we know what this material requires. You can't do it by hand. You can't force people to do that day in and day out to separate all these materials out by hand. That's why we invested $3 million in a optical sorting system that can pick out, um, bottles, uh, plastic bottles, water bottles, 600 per, uh, hour, minute, excuse me, per minute, which compared to a worker, that, that is, there's no comparison. And yet we didn't lose any of our people when we put those in because we assigned them elsewhere to do other things that we felt this will, you know, we didn't lay anyone off, even though when we brought in a robot at one point, uh, that was rumor going around our, oh, they're going to get robots and, and opticals and they're going to lay us all off. I had to pull all the employees in and say, no, that is not the case. This industry is growing and we kept all those people employed.
Now, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions because, um, and I know people would say, well, he's obviously biased, he's, he's another bidder, but the size of your physical location and, and operation, in, in your opinion, first of all, fact, your size of your geographic scope of operation and facilities versus Nebraska land, how much bigger are you physically?
Our site, entire site is 17 acres. Of that, uh, over three acres is under roof, um, so that we can store things as markets go up and down. And we don't do that necessarily to get another $5 a month. It's definitely needed because, you know, it's, it's, would be wonderful that trucks could show up every day that you order the trucks. The mills are responsible for ordering the trucks that come into us. We, they give us a purchase order, they make the connections to find a trucker. They always look for the best deal that they can get. Truckers are getting scarce. So it's a requirement of us to have the space for that eventuality that you might place or get a, an order, but you might not see that trucker show up until a month later. So you've got to be ready for those situations.
Is there any way that you can see a facility as small as Nebraska land currently has capable of fulfilling the contract on that property? I mean, it seems like an obvious answer when I drove by today, but...
The quick answer is no.
I mean, I don't know how many bailers you'd need to have and how many people you'd need to have to, to be doing it, but the, the place that I saw today with, I'm going to, they call them awnings, I, I want to call them lean-tos, that were just full of cardboard and it was spilling all out and, and there was no room to hardly to move on that property. And, um, and I'm familiar with your place. I just didn't see, this is just trying to fit too much onto someplace, it just doesn't make sense.
Our first reaction when we read the proposal, and, and I don't want to take anything away from Mr. Brown and his interest in recycling, but our first reaction was, that might work in a community the size of Columbus, but the City of Omaha has sped past that years ago and we were a part of helping to make that happen.
Was there anything else you wanted to respond to?
I could probably be here all night telling you what I know about recycling and what I think 14 years of doing the city, uh, taught us to make us come in with the bid that we did. But I think one of the, the things that, when I hear consultants say, well, this isn't what we see in other parts of the country, no one ever stops to think, how close are they to the end markets compared to where we are in Nebraska? And, you know, there's no comparison. And unless you understand this business, you would realize that when Waste Management submitted their bid and when we submitted our bid, we were looking at, this is what it takes to run a operation that the City of Omaha has come to expect and for the price that we believe is a fair price. And then one last thing, and this goes to your comments, Councilman Harding. The markets last year demonstrated to us, and they should demonstrate to anyone who has an understanding of how markets work, that giving the city, and it's been said, cost sharing, it's never been cost sharing what the city, uh, is doing. It's talking about revenue sharing, but it's even worse than that. It's projected revenue sharing. An index does not necessarily mean that the mills will follow through on actually buying what they've told this magazine, this is what it's worth. We found that in spades last year when the indexes for most of the year were saying that cardboard is selling for and it, and the price kept dropping, true, but it didn't take into account, the mills did not have to come all the way to Omaha because they could go to processors a lot closer. It only makes sense that that's what they would do. So, you know, the revenue sharing of a projected revenue is far different from actually sharing the risk and rewards that this industry has to face.
That's why I didn't point that part out. That was, that is in the city's favor.
Well, it, it is in the city's favor, exactly.
Now, I'd like to ask you this. You said you have a generous employee benefit program, but do you personally participate in terms of your human resource and hiring practices to know that our city contractors' employees are eligible to gain income from employment in the U.S.? Do you use some sort of e-Verify or, or verification service?
Very much so because as part of the, um, bid, we've been, of course, working with the e-Verify from the day it first came out, whenever that was. I couldn't tell you how long it's been around, but yeah. And the, uh, we have to rely on employment entities as well, our agencies, and they tell us, they use it. But at the end of the period when they can switch over to become employees, we go through it and we get a report of what the e-Verify process said about that employee.
And those are your employees?
And e-Verify admittedly doesn't always work, but when we found out that they weren't, uh, you know, pure legally, we had to say, sorry, you know, um, we brought them in, are you, can you answer this question? And when they broke down in tears and said, no, we broke down in tears, but we said, sorry. That's the way it is.
And, and a number of us would think that there's a need for immigration reform and things like that, but constituents and taxpayers have justifiable concerns to make sure that our contractors are responsible contractors.
Right.
And following the laws and properly classifying their employees and paying workers compensation on them. So do you do all that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, again, I think I took a lot of your time.
Mr. Dobbs, if you want to come up? And then Mr. Brown, I'll give you a chance to...
Just to add a couple... Hail to 314 North 97th, representing First Star Fiber. It is a space and it is a volume issue. And you cannot, with one conveyor belt on that space, with that many employees, with no street parking, handle that volume by hand sorting. Essentially, it's a hand sorting operation respectfully. There's one belt and one screen, but to get where you even have to get to to comply with the city's bid requirements, you have to have significant, substantial hand sorting. You can't do the volume that's projected under this contract, which we think at least for the first three years will be greater than what is projected, and possibly not just get jammed up and be unable to process. And then weather and getting trucks and all the other things and different leases and moving materials around that are being sorted and stored seem to be a dream of an idea that's not ever been tested or tried. And so my earlier remarks, I would call to your attention. All of the things I asked were questions that should have been managed and vetted in due diligence before this matter was presented to you. And we may not have still been the recommended bidder, but those are questions that we felt we had to answer to be competent, to be here today, to be not critical, but constructive, asking the city to not only remember the reliable contract relationship they've had for years with First Star, but if there's going to be a switch, it ought to be with certainty, it ought to be without any risk on day one.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brown, while you're working your way up, um, to the podium, I, I just was thinking of remarks that Councilmember Melton made. Here we had such a serious concern about protecting our recyclable material from contamination that we got these covered bins to keep the, the stuff out of the weather. And when I drove by your place today, I couldn't help but think about the weather that's soon going to be upon us and, and then the spring rainy seasons. It's, it just doesn't make sense to me with such an open environment. But anyway, uh, are your employees, employees of Nebraska land or are they labor-ready type, labor agency places?
Yeah, there's, there's some labor-ready agencies, Express Employment, and then we have some employees as well, full-time.
How many are, are your own employees of Nebraska land versus the others?
Uh, I want to say we have full-time, uh, nine full-time and then what, 20-some that are still with Express?
Yeah. And so, you know, I think as we peel back the layers, that's just another concern. But, um, this is your opportunity. I wanted to be fair to you. I let Mr. Goobles talk and is there anything else that you feel that you haven't had the opportunity to say on your own company's behalf that you felt in a minute or so you wanted to take to share with us before we end the public hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that, for that opportunity. I, I guess I would just reiterate that, um, there, there seems to be a, um, a feeling of there's only one way to do recycling in the country and that's just simply not the case. There, there, there are hundreds of different types of MRFs out there, a lot of different equipment, a lot of different size volumes versus different types of buildings and equipments that, that I've seen and firsthand witnessed. You know, in, in respect to, to First Star's position, um, I, I would be doing exactly what they're doing because they have a lot to lose. I mean, they have a $4 million contract on, on the line and, um, and 20,000-plus tons. So, so things will change dramatically for them if they are not, or, or if we're rejected as the bidder or as the, as the processor. But I'll come back to, we are already doing 25,000 tons a year of material, exactly the way we have it set up now. So for us to say, we could do another 20,000 with additional equipment, with additional shifts, with the same end markets going to the same place that they sell to, um, same logistic costs to get them there, um, it's just a difference of business opinions of how to make money on the same exact process. That's all it is. And so for me to be able to put a bid in and present to the city and the taxpayers of Omaha, any option that does the same recycling process and save the taxpayers $1.3 million a year, I had to bid. It, it was a no-brainer. I am an Omaha citizen. Um, I am an Omaha taxpayer. So for me to just sit back and go, hmm, there is a $4 million bid to do the exact same recycling process that we do, and I know my numbers, um, it, it, in, in good conscience, I could not have, um, not answered the phone call, uh, not answered the call to, would you be interested in bidding and would you be interested in recycling Omaha's material? So with that being said, um, I appreciate your time and, and, um, and hopefully being considered for the, for the contract.
Thank you. Madam clerk?
Item 36, an ordinance approving the HNHC Central Park Scattered Housing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan Agreement for various locations as listed on the agenda in an amount up to $150,000.
The public hearing on item 36 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. On TIF, I'd like to revise and extend my remarks from last week, adding this week's to that. And by the way, I need my glasses. There seems to be some differences in the way different TIF things are worded, different ordinances for it. But just coincidence, I suppose, that, uh, Mr. Justin Wayne has a nice big article in Midland's Voices today, the World Herald. We finally get some information about TIF from him and through Omaha World Herald, but not through this. I'd like to point out that, uh, he makes a statement here that's very interesting. One of them is that, uh, the new amendment is designed to incentivize developers to use TIF in those areas that need the most help. Well, I don't know that we need an investment amendment to do that. Can't we have tax credits? Do we have to have TIF? There's a difference. TIF has been described as, in some places, as a loan over 15 years, but then you use city-county funds to help pay the cost of that development. Question is, will that developer be here in 15 or 20 years? Who's going to pay for that when he maybe backs out of the deal? Now, he's also suggested in this new amendment, he calls it a repayment period.
Are you talking about Senator Wayne's?
I'm talking about TIF.
No, you'd have to talk about this item, not Senator Wayne's.
All right, I'm against it because it is TIF. And TIF is not good for a citizen that lives in that area. You're driving him out, you're just spending... You're driving him out, you just expense of the taxpayer. No way, two ways around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents to item 36? The public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance to add Section 10-271.5 to Article 9 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission to provide for an exemption from the payment of fees for permits and inspections.
The public hearing on item 37 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 38, an ordinance to amend Section 12-51 of Article 3 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Prevention of COVID-19 to Extend the Sunset Provision, Aids Communications and Support.
Thank you. Before we begin the public hearing on item 38, I'd ask the Public Health Director, Dr. Adipur, to come down and tell us the state of the situation dealing with this pandemic and to conclude with your recommendation.
Good afternoon, City Councilmember Adipur, Douglas County Health Department. I just want to make a few comments comparing the week of 8/15, August 15, that's when you put the mask mandate in place and the results that we have from last week. August 15, we had 756 cases that week. We now have 687, a decrease of 69 cases or 9%. We tested that week 7,390 individuals and last week 7,890. So we tested 500 more last week, an increase of 6.8%. Our positivity rate in August 15 week was 10.2%. It was 8.7% last week, so a decrease of potentially 24.5%. So in summary, we have less cases last week, we tested more people last week, and we decreased our positivity. Just a few comments I want to make. You know, prevention is very difficult to be measured, and therefore, you know, people always say, what did this mandate do? What would have happened if we didn't have the mask mandate? So that's my first point. Second point, it is that I hear often, it's very difficult for children to wear masks. Well, I had the chance last week to visit two schools, one elementary and one middle school with a superintendent, total of 1,000 kids. There was only one time when a child didn't have the mask over their nose, and we reminded them. I watched them inquire, I watched them in PE, one was reading to the full class, one class was in recess, everything without masks. And more so, after school left, I was standing outside, you know, the children were coming out, they were not ripping their mask off, they were leaving the masks on, even walking home to school. Then the other comment I hear often is, why a mandate? This is all about professional responsibility. But I heard from an individual last week, their school actually had a soccer game in the city of Omaha. Everybody was wearing masks because in the stands, they were too close together. The same team, the next week, had a soccer game in the county area outside of Douglas County. Nobody wore a mask. If there would have been personal responsibility, I again tell you, that may have made a difference. Last but not least, I think from President Trump's White House Task Force last night when I got home, I got this comment from Admiral Brett Geyer, "We can save lives by wearing a mask." And I think that's the most pronounced comment that I could make for you, and I would recommend you extend the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Are there any proponents on item 38? Proponents? If not, we'll move to the opponents. Come on down.
I have a proponent, Mr. Duro.
You'll have to wait. You'll have to wait, Mr. Hymas.
I will.
Council President, Councilmembers, my name is Andrew Sullivan, 7748 Western Avenue. I'm on reduced hours in the hospitality industry on it, and I follow these numbers, have had plenty of time to follow these numbers and understand the data. My parents were also in the medical field and surgeons. So here's the problem. These facts change so quickly on it, and the CDC has lots of arguments, and we don't follow those arguments. But here's some good news. Less than 1% of the people have active COVID-19 infection. 99% of us can't spread it because we don't have it unless we get infected. So that means most of this mask-wearing does little good whatsoever. There are situations where it makes sense, such as going into a hospital or dealing with a nursing home, but for the most part, it doesn't have very marginal effect. What a mandate does goes beyond that. What people view when they hear there's a mask mandate, they decide it's, they take it down a step further and say, it's too dangerous to go out. And visitors to the city decide it's too dangerous to come into Omaha. Dr. Adipur just mentioned the people outside of the city didn't wear masks. In the city, they wear masks. While when people wear masks, they tend to stay away. The problems we're encountering now is psychological. We've got restaurants and hotels that are going to be empty and closed permanently. They're already closing. Dundee Del closed, and Old Chicago closed, and more on the way. They'll be declaring bankruptcy, and the people are going to leave the city. There's no point. Why live here if nobody wants to entertain or have any activities going on? This is a serious problem. I also take exception with what Dr. Adipur's interpretation of the data. They're doing positivity tests, and there's a dispute as to how much of those positivity tests should be at. The problem with those, that positive rate is you're basically counting tests instead of counting active cases. People have multiple tests taken because maybe I got false negative, maybe I got false positive, so I take the test again. And it contradicts the first test, so I take a third test to figure out which one it is. So you have all of that taking place. You're counting tests, and it turns into a scam. So the problem you have to look at is the actual active cases. On the Douglas County Court, Douglas County Health Site, I've had to do the math to figure out what the activity, amount of active cases are. We're lucky, it's well under 4,000 cases under. And it's going to change. It's going to go up one week, down the next week. A rainstorm after Labor Day caused a big dip in tests. So pay attention to it, but I don't think the mandate works. It's hurting the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent. Don't be shy. Come on down.
Opponent.
Opponent. Those who are opposed.
My name is Christopher Rogers, 716 North 16th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. Thank you, Amy. I'm not a medical doctor. I don't have a lot of medical expertise, so I'm going to try to stay away from that. What I do want to talk about is the danger of using a false metric to justify continuation of a mask mandate. Metrics can be manipulated, as all of you know. I think that is definitely a danger here, and I personally believe that we're already seeing that to some extent. I do not wear a mask. I will not wear a mask. I do not claim a medical exemption. It is my personal belief that this council does not have the authority to dictate that I do so, any more than you could dictate I wear a purple shirt on Tuesday, and that's just where I'm at. To the business owners amongst you, we are not your enemy. We're your neighbors, we're your friends. We patronize your Omaha businesses on purpose. Do not feel compelled to be the enforcement arm of this council for tyrannical edict. I want to give you my money because I choose to do so. So if you want to engage in commerce with me, please respect that. To my fellow citizens, we've been manipulated on this issue for six months and counting. It's big tech censorship, big media censorship. We should not be divided on this issue. It's not Republican or Democrat, it's not left or right. If you choose to wear a mask, I respect that. I will support and defend your right to do so. All I ask of you is that you do the same for me. Turn off the TV, get off of Google, go to Tor, go to DuckDuckGo, educate yourself. There is a world of information out there, and you will be amazed at what you find. In closing, thank you for your time. We will get past this one way or the other, but sometimes you do have to stand up. Now is the time to stand up and be counted. Right now is the time to stand up and be counted. And if anyone would like to discuss further, I'm not hard to find. I'm that cripple guy with no mask on. And in closing, hydrochloroquine works. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
I probably won't be long, ma'am. Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 681232. I'd like to finish today. I am against this. Now, last week, there was a certain gentleman here that referred to me as being ignorant. I'd like to read some words out of this ordinance that I think maybe are ignorant and tell you why. I'm against it. Entitled Prevention of COVID, I'm sorry, folks, you haven't prevented it. That's ignorant. Sunset provision, what the hell does that mean? That's ignorant. Public hearing? Well, I don't know. A few minutes ago, I didn't really get to hear, nobody got to hear me, did they? You didn't cut this fine gentleman off, and he's right. He's right on the button. And it says so on his shirt.
Director's comments to the council, not to the audience, please, you know the rule.
There you go again. You let him speak, but you don't let me speak. Thank you, sir. I'm glad you're not running again. You need to be replaced.
Maintain order, Mr. Store. You'll be escorted from the chamber. Next opponent, please.
My name is Dinny Sprachon. I live at 1725 Bowie Drive. Thank you all to the members of the council. I am almost thankful for the mask mandate because we now know who actually runs the city of Omaha. It's being run by the teachers' union, the Harridons in the grocery store that come up and take your photo and threaten to put you on social media. It's being run by the Dundee Karens who get you kicked out of grocery stores and out of ice cream stores. And my personal favorite right now, this city is being run by a nanny state. The nanny state is Jean Stothard, Adipur, and you. We have become a city of nannies. What we, the liberty-based and data-based people must realize, and you must realize, the city council is, a lot of us are starting to consider, is Omaha really our home? Is this really the city we stay? Because you have normalized masks. You've normalized it. We're coming into flu season, there is no reason to suspect that you won't do this in flu season. So you have normalized the aberrant. So is this our home? Do we belong here? Omaha has become a city of the fearful and the emotional. This city is being driven by emotion and fear on many aspects, but especially on the mask. So I continue to encourage everyone to be honest and to shop in Sarpy County and in council bluffs where we are respected and our money is desired. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Lydia Conway, 2105 South 123rd Avenue. I didn't plan to have my son with me, but I'm kind of glad I did because you could see he was trying to pull the mask off of my face as I carried him in today. I work here as a nonprofit administrator in Omaha, and as you can see, I'm a mother. I'm not universally opposed to masks, but I am opposed to extending the mandate, mostly because of how it's impacting our children. I read the emails in support of the mandate from the school administrators, and I refute their baseless claim that masks are working. There's no evidence supporting this hypothesis. It's more likely the reason for transmission in schools is low is because children are not likely to transmit the virus and by and large are not susceptible to its harmful effects. Dr. Alan Palmer, a practicing physician of over 20 years, wrote, "Making children wear face masks has the potential to cause long-term psychological, emotional, and physical damage. It promotes an excessive fear of germs, phobia, and of social interaction. The reduced oxygen levels will increase anxiety, fatigue, and brain fog, and decrease learning capacity due to decreased oxygen to the brain, weaken their immune systems, and can lead to an increased rate and severity of all types of infections, not just COVID-19." Furthermore, this mandate is a gross infringement on parental rights outlined in the due process clause of the 14th Amendment, which protects fundamental rights of parents to make decisions concerning the care, custody, and control of their children. This was upheld by Troxel versus Granville in Supreme Court in the year 2000. To quote another doctor, Dr. Joseph Ladapo, in a recent Wall Street Journal article, "The point of life is living, and everyone is better off with policies that focus on protecting the most vulnerable populations. That doesn't take never-ending mandates. It requires only abandoning fear of being sensible about who is targeted for testing and protections, expanding treatment capacity and therapies, and choosing to live with the virus rather than live for it." My son will be a year old tomorrow. For more than half his life, he's lived in a COVID world. Time is perceived differently by children. To a five-year-old, six months is an eternity. I ask you to consider the potential long-term ramifications of an extended mask mandate and weigh it against the risk for which children especially is very low. Children have a greater chance of dying of drowning than from COVID-19. Will you mandate that parents can't bathe their children? Will you close swimming pools? Parents, if they mandate that we mask our children, what else can they mandate that you do or don't do with your children? Where does this attack on parental rights end? This mandate is a one-size-fits-all solution for a complex problem. Please let us decide what's best for our families."
Next opponent, please.
Dr. Lee Merritt, and I'm, I have a business out at 18111 Q Street in Lighton, Omaha. Now, I'm a classically trained physician. My business is actually a little laser tattoo removal business, but I'm a classically trained physician. I graduated from the University of Rochester School of Medicine in 1980. I became an orthopedic spinal surgeon, did 10 years as a military surgeon, and then I served on a congressional committee that looked at technology for the military, for the Navy specifically. And as that, I researched bioweapons and all sorts of stuff, and masks. And I'm going to tell you, in my entire professional career, I have never heard anybody actually believe that these kind, any kind of masks, short of an actual Level 4 containment suit, made a difference to small particle viruses. In fact, the CDC itself just published an article in May exactly saying that. They cannot, you cannot contain influenza with these masks, and that's even larger than this virus. Now, I reviewed all this science. I gave a talk out in Nevada last month, and it's online, YouTube, Medical Technocracy in my name, and you can look at all the sciency stuff. My conclusion, looking at all the, redoing my investigation at this time, is that people that are now purporting to scientifically prove masks work are either being paid or being played. This just doesn't work this way. And, you know, the outcome of this is not going to be good. The previous speaker said some of the things I wanted to say about children. You know, children actually, we have, we have bad things happening here because children learn by looking at facial expressions. They socialize. We are, we are creating a generation of people that will be afraid of normal existence, and that's not a good thing. The second thing is, I don't know if you know how badly you're damaging the economy. You guys haven't missed a paycheck, but as a small business owner, we've missed a lot of paychecks, and it's not getting better particularly because I live outside the ring of Omaha. And, you know, when you live outside there, you don't have to wear a mask. We're not social distancing. We're all hanging out with each other, and nobody's getting sick any more than they did last season. The actual survival rate this season is 99.991%. It's actually gone up to probably 99.997 with the new CDC revelations. And last year's flu season was 99.992%. And for that, we're, we're making our children afraid, and that's not a good outcome. So I think this is time to, time to end this, and I just want to say that I've taken two oaths in my life, one to the Constitution as a naval officer, and one to the oath of Hippocrates when it says, I shouldn't do mischief to my patients. And mischief includes lying to them. "I shouldn't do mischief to my patients," and mischief includes lying to them. I'm just not going to do that anymore. I'm not wearing a mask, and I guess I won't be shopping around if that's necessary. But I think it's time that, I mean, you guys could turn this around. You're either going to ride the city down, or you're going to turn this around, and you can do it right now. I'm just reminded of Boris Yeltsin's, you know, this lie is going to fall apart here pretty darn soon. The, the truth is coming out. And Boris Yeltsin once said, "You can, you can sit on a throne of bayonets, but you can't sit on it for long."
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Next opponent, please.
Hi, Andrea Wyke, 18533 Ruggles Street. So today I wanted to talk about the unlawful masking and guidelines. First off, the city council has all broken their oaths to the Constitution. Um, and I'm going to go ahead and read the supremacy clause for you in Article 6, Clause 2 of this Constitution, "The laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary, not worth standing." Not withstanding, excuse me. Amendment 1, this mandate or guidelines is in violation of this. "Congress shall make no law respecting establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble, and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." This is in violation of my religion, and I'm tired of going out into the public and every time being ostracized, being condemned for my religion. This is also in violation of Amendment 4. "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or by affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized." So unlawful search does include temperature taking. That is not right. I, as an American, have a right to be secure in my persons under the Fourth Amendment, as protected by the Constitution. These are not even enforceable. You are initiating medical intervention which people still have a right to refuse. And finally, God created the people, and it is the right of the people to be free. The city council wants to trample on freedom of religion with their unlawful guidelines, and I have come to speak as a rebuke to protect my right of religion. I have a right to honor God and not be forced to mask. God commanded us, "Fear not." God never said to fear disease. You all know that this is about money. That's what this is really about, and officials getting those taxpayer dollars. If you are a God-fearing man or woman, you need to know that what you are doing is wrong. And I pray that law enforcement is willing to uphold their oath and protect the people with this violation of the people's rights as we are now seeing arrests from around the country for non-masking. No public official has a right to take away rights as protected under the Constitution. Unalienable rights come from God. This is evil to force some of the people into partial suffocation against their religion, and it's a violation of the Constitution which you have all said an oath to. People of Omaha, do not mask. You have a right under your freedom of religion. You do not need to mask. You do not need to submit to temperature taking. This is your right.
Next opponent, please.
My name is Dr. Tapper, 16909 Burke Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Again, my name is Dr. Tapper, and I am no stranger to you as this is my third time here addressing regulations and mask mandates. Imagine a virus so deadly and severe that you have to have a test done to find out whether or not you've had it. You guys are basing these numbers on positive cases and not hospitalizations or deaths. That's what you should be basing those off of. The numbers are hyperinflated by false positives and the never-ending doom and gloom from the mainstream media. I was taught that fear is the fire that fuels the furnace of disease. And when will this fear mongering stop? It is terrifying to me to think how easily this mask mandate could turn into a vaccine one. You see, I follow the vaccine narrative very closely, and I have been for the last decade. I have witnessed firsthand the damages that can occur after a vaccination, conditions like transverse myelitis or Guillain-Barre. I have met many families that have lost a child to vaccine injury. Injuries are real and not rare. The companies that lie and gaslight these poor families are the same companies and organizations that feed you and the public this Corona propaganda. Last year, the World Health Organization stated that the greatest threat to our health is people who refuse vaccinations. Shortly after that, the ACIP for the CDC stated that they, they cannot force vaccinations, but they could force compliance. How are they going to do that? I don't wear a mask anywhere I go, and the public shaming that occurs is beyond humiliating. I have been refused business, and on some occasions, I couldn't enter the store. If the mask mandate turns into a vaccine mandate, you will not be allowed to go back to work, earn a paycheck, renew your driver's license, or function in everyday society without proof of the vaccination. We had draconian bills sweeping the nation last year coming after our medical freedoms, and then the coronavirus came. The Trojan horse to implement this tyrannical agenda. I believe this to be spiritual and psychological warfare in the people. The rate of suicide is the highest it ever has been in human history. More people have died this year of suicide than from Corona. More, the National Alliance on Mental Illness Help Line has seen a 65% increase in calls and emails since March. In other words, the vast majority of health, emotional, physical, psychological, and financial hardships now faced by citizens are not due to COVID-19. They are due to ongoing catastrophic lockdowns, restrictions, and policies imposed by unaccountable irrational governments. Since when is it your job to pass legislation on health? History teaches us that when the government takes away a certain freedom or liberty, they do not freely give it back. Martin Luther King Jr. once stated that oppressed people cannot remain oppressed forever. The yearning for freedom eventually manifests itself. We are six months into this circus that was supposed to be two weeks to flatten the curve. I pray, I pray to the good Lord above that he, that the people wake up and realize that we're not dealing with a temporary inconvenience here, but we are headed into a full-on medical dictatorship.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hi, Joy Schultz, 421 South 154th Street. Last month, I wrote each of you a letter asking for an amendment to the mask ordinance that would exempt voluntary associations. And so I am here again this month to ask for the same thing. Thank you, Councilmember Harding, for introducing that. I do believe that you all have the best interests of Omahans at heart, and you are trying to protect people from COVID-19. I also want to ask you to look at other aspects of our community's health as you set public policy. And I'll echo the last speaker in terms of mental health. The therapists that I know here in Omaha have reported being busier than ever, and they are exhausted. Mental health calls are up 65% nationwide. The CDC did a study in June and reported that anxiety and depression rates are three to four times what they would normally be this time this year, and that the thought of suicide is twice as high as it was at this time last year. These mental health conditions are disproportionately affecting young adults and Black and Hispanic Americans. In terms of business closures, the New York Times reported in July that the nation's business closure rate had jumped up to 14%. And this also echoes a May U N O. study that suggested 1 in 6 businesses in Nebraska were on the verge of permanently closing. Both of these studies were done after federal financial aid had been given, and these are early indicators that perhaps by next year, as many as 30,000 Nebraska businesses will have closed permanently. In terms of the educational achievement gap, education consultants are estimating that there is now between an average of three months and 12 months increase, a 15 to 20% increase in the education gap, which disproportionately affects low-income students as well as Black and Hispanic students. The disruption of sports, extracurricular activities, and celebrations like graduation, as well as anxieties related to the fear of spreading the virus, contribute to feelings of social isolation and reduce motivation in academic completion. I know my own 12-year-old daughter, despite having a medical note allowing her to take off her mask at school, does not take off her mask because she has been told by the media, relatives, and peers that if she does so, she may kill someone. She now cries every day before going to school. She does not want to go to school any longer. Why do I believe that a legislated mask mandate exemplifies a culture of fear as opposed to a rational and fair response to the pandemic? Since March, there have been less than 300 related COVID deaths in the entire state of Nebraska outside of nursing homes, compared to the tens of thousands of Nebraskans who have been negatively affected by government policies related to COVID-19. On the other hand, you would have to add the population of the city of Omaha to Omaha eight more times to mirror the demographic density of a city like New York City. I'm not asking for an either/or, I'm asking for a both-and. Continue the mask mandate, but allow exemptions for private associations who can best plan for the interests, physical, mental, and spiritual, of their memberships. Allow this as a way to relieve the stress and pressure many in our community are experiencing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next opponent, please.
Hello again. My name is Ally French, 4213 North 172nd Street. I have come before you yet again to oppose a mandate for an unavoidably unsafe precaution intended to prevent or slow the spread of a mild viral infection. Here's the thing, even if 100% of the population got COVID-19, the fact of the matter is that over 99% of us would be perfectly fine. Cases in no standing should justify a mandate of any kind. Getting sick is not the problem. It's okay to get sick. It is the circle of life even that some will pass, and each death is very sad. Getting sick can actually be a good thing. Let's take measles, for example. Studies suggest a naturally-acquired measles infection can reduce risk of Hodgkin's and non-Hodgkin's lymphomas, reduced risk of atopic diseases such as eczema, hay fever, and asthma, lower risk of mortality from cardiovascular disease as adults. Infants born to mothers who have had naturally-acquired measles are protected from measles via maternal immunity from their breast milk. Getting sick flexes the immune system, and that's a good thing. It means things are working properly, and you will recover. Of course, this is contingent on your health prior to contraction and the prevention and treatment you utilize. I can tell you the people who are enduring aggressive medications and procedures like ventilators, steroids, and antibiotics may not weather as well. We'd likely see fewer severe or worsening cases if these treatments were avoided, though your experts will try to attribute these effects to the virus itself. And rather, if it was recommended that people stay home, rest, and drink bone broth, which no one can tell me they can't afford because it's simply an $8 whole chicken and two bottles worth of water. And, and wait it out like we do with all other viral infections. So do you see getting sick is not the problem? And restricting healthy and even asymptomatic people is silly. I am not suggesting that people purposely seek out this virus, but I am insisting we recognize these restrictions as futile and abandonship, so to speak. Masks not only don't help, but they come with their own risk of side effects. We have watched as report after report comes in that so-and-so has come down with pneumonia, a bronchial infection, strep, lung damage, passing out, fatigue, hostility, heightened anxiety leading to panic attacks, depression, general sense of unease, which in turn lowers your immune system, and it's not from COVID, it is from the masks. People are being forced to wear them for long durations without breaks at work, even when they pass out behind the bar and begin convulsing after being moved to the office and should not be wearing a mask. But employers are being forced to choose between their employees' health and the survival of their business. Rather than protecting us from a virus that 99% of us will survive without complication, you have directly harmed this community, and for that, someone should be getting fired. We are receiving absolute misinformation from the experts you've selected to advise the decisions you all are making. You cannot claim to be making scientific, let alone constitutional rulings, when you're only acknowledging the information from obviously biased sources, sources that were never elected to govern the citizens of our community.
Thank you.
Sources I would even go so far as to question their motives.
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Next opponent, please.
Hi there. My name's Tanya Cloyd. I am at 2811 Inglewood in Papillion. Um, I do not have anything prepared today, but I have spoken before on this, and I just want to say the CDC, we're like, we're not in a pandemic anymore. Like, the CDC has downgraded this to just an outbreak. There are other states that are lifting their mask mandate. There are other countries that are lifting their mask mandate. And I would just encourage you guys to do the same here because, um, one thing for me, this mask mandate hasn't really affected me. I've never worn a mask. I will never wear a mask. And it's just frustrating because I know that the longer you elongate this and extend this, it's getting us closer to the vaccine. And I am not getting the vaccine. I'm not giving my family the vaccine, so I'm not playing along. Like, I am not going along with this, knowing that that's where we're trying to get to, especially because 12 of the COVID-19 vaccines, right now in the making, are using aborted fetal DNA. You guys have to understand how awful and wrong and evil this is, and we should not be using that, we should not be participating in it. And that's why I'm not playing along because this should be shut down. Like, this should not be... I, I just feel like you guys need to realize that you're either being deceived or you're part of this. Like, the, it's, it's such a big deal, and I'm so passionate about it, and I don't have anything written today, but I just need you guys to realize that you are part of this, right? And, and Jesus died on the cross for me, and he gave his, he gave his body and his blood for me. He gave his DNA, right? And he freely did this. And he said, "Take this so that you'll have life." A child in the womb is taking, taken from its mother's womb. Its, its life isn't given up freely. It is taken and is murdered. And here comes the scientists saying, "Take this body and blood of this child so that you will have life, because without it, you'll die." You guys, you don't understand the spiritual warfare, and you don't understand that we are being deceived and fooled, and this is, there's so much evil involved. And I just, I just want you guys to understand that. And we're, there's just so much deception, and I just, I just pray for you guys that you would, you would realize how big of a deal this is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hi, Reagan Simons. Let's get this thing on. Brought some visual aids.
I need your address, please.
Oh, 17572 Harrison. Okay. My name is Reagan Simons, um, and I'm speaking to you today, as I did a few weeks ago, regarding the harms to these masks with children. Why does the city council insist on harming children of Omaha? This unconstitutional mask mandate hurts children. A few weeks ago, I brought you evidence of the harm you are inflicting on the people of Omaha, specifically the children of Omaha, and now here you sit, ready to extend this mandate that hurts children. I brought before you two Petri dishes filled with bacteria swab from my own children's masks, and here are the pictures to remind you. I am a parent who washes and sanitizes their masks regularly. I have talked to public school teachers, and they say kids come day in and day out wearing the same dirty masks. They don't look or smell dirty, but they are. A lab tech looked at this and said, "As a lab tech, I see yeast, staph, E. coli, and a list of other bacterias. I noticed Adi Por is still here. Maybe she can help me out with what's on the mask." Children are getting sick, passing out, developing lesions, and becoming depressed because it's insanely difficult to make friends with people you can't see, you can't understand, and you can't touch. Study after study has now shown that children are not super-spreaders of this virus. There have been zero deaths, age 0 to 19, due to COVID in Nebraska. I expect you to read the article published on the National Institute of Health website called "No Evidence of Secondary Transmission of COVID-19 From Children Attending School in Ireland in 2020." As well, there's an article called "COVID-19 and Schools: Guidelines of the French Pediatric Society." They cite multiple studies from all over the world to prove transmission from children is rare, and most contact-traced cases, it's nonexistent. They recommend children return to school as normal, and get this, wash their hands. They don't say the children need to wear masks. They say wash their hands. It's logical. So why does the city council insist on continuing to harm the children of Omaha? Depending on the mask that you have, it is likely pretty worthless, as shown in this table from the World Health Organization. There we go. Other major cities have exempted children because they know masks harm children. Oh, I have another document. As shown in this document. Children under 18 are exempted in Tulsa and Sarasota. New Hampshire's mask mandate exempts kids in K through 12 schools. Cities like Nashville, Memphis, San Francisco exempt children under 12. Atlanta, Denver, Houston exempt kids that are 10 and under. So why does the city council insist on harming children? COVID has a 99% recovery rate, and that's good news. The average age of death due to COVID, according to the CDC, is 78. The average life expectancy in the U.S. and Douglas County is 76. So why are we masking children seven to 10 hours a day, all day, every day, with one, two-minute mask break and lunch? Several schools force kids to wear them outside when it's 90 degrees, while they're in recess, while they're doing PE activities.
Thank you.
Why is this council harming children? Why is this council harming children?
Next opponent, please. You can give that to the clerk, she'll make it a part of the record.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Litsen. My address is 14606 Boyd, 68116. I'm here to remind you that on August 11th, 2020, when you passed the emergency ordinance, I told you that you didn't have the authority to make an emergency ordinance because Omaha was not experiencing an emergency from COVID-19 infections. Without evidence, you passed it anyway. It is now September 29th, we're 49 days into this illegal mandate. You have now proven definitively that the mandate is illegal because new cases are still being added. Under the City Charter, Section 2.13, you are bound by subsection 1, which states, quote, "The emergency procedure shall be restricted to the following: ordinances for dealing with conditions immediately affecting the peace, prosperity, health, safety, or morals of the community," end quote. The emergency ordinance must have an immediate effect. From the ordinance and the amendment, you said, quote, "The ordinance seeks to impose a non-pharmaceutical intervention to combat the spread of COVID-19 and to halt the progression thereof," end quote. Because in 49 days, the mandated procedure has not shown the immediate effect of halting all new cases of COVID-19, the emergency ordinance is null and void. So, the ordinance contains 34 exemptions, and they not only weaken the mandate, they invalidate the mandate. If masks work, and there are exemptions, then the mandate is invalid, because new cases will continue to spread, and the purpose of the emergency ordinance was to halt the spread. If masks don't work, then the mandate is invalid, because the charter requires emergency ordinances to have an immediate effect, not a 49-day effect. In this case, the immediate effect must be completely halting new cases. Believe me, I don't want to be here today. But I could no longer sit by while you make a mockery of science and representative government. The people of Omaha are good, kind neighbors. If masks worked to stop viruses and didn't cause harm, we wouldn't need a mandate to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. Just by show of hands, how many do we have left? Okay, if you can, you want to make your way down closer, it's up to you, but...
My name is Nicole of 999 South 49th Street, Omaha.
Nicole, I need your last name.
Oh, Williams.
Thank you.
So, I was here last time, and I know that every single one of you who is a government official is held up to a higher standard of knowing all laws. And you've also solemnly taken oaths to uphold the Constitution, and right now, every single one of you know, you know you are, in violation of our inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Every false mandate, regulation, statute, all that, even law, which the Constitution does not authorize, is null and void. You literally have reduced my income, my state of living, my pursuit of happiness, my life, my inalienable rights, where I can barely even provide for myself. I have to choose to either pay a bill or eat food, okay? So, you guys are really giving me so much time to study the laws and to make sure that next time you see me, I am going after every single one of your bonds. I'm going to find out first off if they're even authorized and valid, and I know I have three times to go after them, and once they cash out, you can no longer be a government official, period. And I'm going to make it my vow to make sure that every single one of you, since you already know all this, can no longer hold seat in the offices, because you all know you are violating, you are literally destroying our economy of local businesses. And I promise, I am making it my mission to let every local business know, I will take the time to educate every single one of them to make sure they know their inalienable rights...
Ma'am, bring yourself under order, or you'll be escorted from the chamber. Calm down.
You've gotten me this far. And I promise you, you guys are all motivated me to make sure that every single local business knows their inalienable rights and stay 100% operating open. And I promise you, next time I see all of you, you will be on official notice. I am going after all of your bonds, and I will go after all of your private...
Ma'am, you're out of order. Bring down your tone, or you'll be escorted from the chamber.
I can speak whatever way I need to.
Escort her from the chamber.
I have a right to speak the way I need to, to point my cross. I do...
This one here.
Nicole, my stuff, you have no right to touch me. I have the right to speak. And let you all know, you're in violation. I am going to make sure, do not touch me. You do not have the right to touch me. Do not touch me. You do not have the right to touch me. You're in violation. I am going after you, officer of court. I am going after every single one of you. Enjoy your lifestyle now, because I'm taking everything from you all. I promise you. Like this and take this. Yes or no? Yes or no? You're witnessing it right now. You're witnessing the stripping away of our freedom. Do you believe in the Constitution? Are your rights in the Constitution or not? I promise you!
Sir, you're out of order. Next opponent, please.
Good evening, my name is Scott Los, 18414 Sherwood Avenue. First, I would like to thank the council for filibustering for almost three hours on the recycling contract details that should have been resolved before today's public hearing. This, I believe, was done in an attempt to wear us out, including parents with young children, before you got to the mask mandate agenda item. I don't know why that could have been handled in your pre-meetings and other details. By the way, where's our mayor? She talks about trash with such passion, but it can't be present for this critical discussion about our health and liberty. I would like to point out that this afternoon, I have observed every council member touch their mask, fidget with their mask, and then not wash their hands or use hand sanitizer, as per the hallowed CDC guidelines, essentially voiding the so-called effectiveness of the mask. It's kind of do as I say, not as I do, and we've seen that all over the country. I say so-called because many experts say that masks may work, but none can say so with 100% certainty. The published data is suspect, and even if to be believed, positive test results only vary a few percentage points from week to week. When will you stop mandating masks, particularly if no effective vaccine is ever developed? Do you understand the flatten curve? Do you understand statistics? Do you understand that 2% of the population has had COVID supposedly? When are we going to wait out the other 98%? That could take years and years and years. Are the mask mandates going to continue until that time? I don't trust Adi Poor, and I don't trust you. Finally, unless each of you can look me in the eye and tell me that wearing a mask will not have an adverse or negative impact on my health, my wife's health, and my children's health, you have no business, no business dictating to me that I wear a mask. I implore you, don't worry about being on the right side of history, but just worry about being right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Kelly Jensen, 417 South 12th, Omaha, Nebraska. Old market, business owner. I am the founder of the No Mask Omaha Group, and I represent 3,400 people that live here in Omaha that are sick of this mandate. I'm furious. I won't raise my voice, Chris. Throwing somebody out just goes to show, you got your minds made up, don't you? Right? Every one of you. Are you going to listen to the scientists? Doctors? Who? Just got your mind made up, right? Keep wearing your mask. Not much longer. I ask you to end this. This is getting bad. You're affecting businesses. I own a business. I host, do security work. I'm a professional. I'm leaving this town, November 1st. I turned in my lease, terminated my lease, early, because I'm sick and tired of every one of you. You don't protect Omaha. You're just following suit. You're puppets. Stand up for us. That's what you're here for. And if you don't, you'll all come to the end of your term. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Shantel Wyatt, 3601 North 19th Street, 68110. I had no plan on even being able to make it tonight, or this afternoon, let alone talking, so thank you for taking as long as you needed to on the recycling, I guess. I am a foster parent, and I'm raising kids from hard places, daily. Kids that have... Kids that have been abused, kids that have had mothers and fathers either with Johns around them or drugs around them, or just such severe neglect in Omaha that their neurologist says they remind them of children adopted from Russia who are left in a crib with no contact. That's what I'm raising. I don't take the easy-peasy cases, because there really are no easy-peasy cases in foster care. I'm also a bioparent. I have six kids in my home. My kids from hard places have destroyed limbic systems. Earlier, you learned about the limbic system, which is the area of the brain involved in emotion and memory. The limbic system includes the hypothalamus, the thalamus, the amygdala, and the hippocampus. The hypothalamus plays a role in the activation of the sympathetic nervous system that is part of any given emotional reaction. My children, when they look at you with those masks on, are terrified. So not only have they gone through abuse, neglect, substance abuse, not only have they gone through all of that, but every day that their therapists are required to wear masks. I don't care if you choose to wear a mask, I really don't. That's not what this is about. This is about my children having to see adults at the doctor's office, or therapists, or... We don't even go to church right now, because all of the childcare workers wear masks, and my children cannot regulate their nervous systems, you guys. This isn't a joke. This is my children not being able to look at somebody and go, "They're not mad at me, they're just talking to me." If they can't see your whole facial expression, they can't regulate their nervous system. That's what is happening right now. So these kids that I had gotten with the help of therapists and lots of other things, because this is a huge undertaking, just like every foster parent in this city, in this world. It's a huge undertaking. But we had gotten these kids to where they had pretty good regulation of their emotions, of their nervous system, their vestibular, their proprioceptive, all of that. Look it up. It is things that, because of these masks, they no longer have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next opponent, please.
My name is Rich Rogers, Omaha, Nebraska, 6917 South 50th Street. I did not come to speak today, I came to support my brother, but after what I've witnessed, I had to come and say a few things to the council members that voted no. Thank you. To the rest of you, shame on you. You are power-hungry, you are overreaching, and you are irresponsible, and that is the truth. I will not wear a mask, I will not comply. My family will not wear a mask, my kids will not wear a mask, and we will not go elsewhere, because this is our home. We will go to the stores in our community, the restaurants in our community, and because of the irresponsible, overreaching decisions you guys are making, we will be confronted by people you guys have given the false sense of power to think it is their job to enforce what I do, what I wear, as a free American citizen. And that is wrong. And you guys are forcing that on us, without reason to back it, and it's ridiculous. And that's about all I got to say, except you, sir, you are out of order, and you should be ashamed for your actions today. Thank you.
You may be excused. Next opponent, please.
Hi, Lacey Lucas Savage Hughes, 653 South 212th Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022. Sorry, we just moved there four months ago, and it's hard to remember zip codes. I have to agree with the last speaker. For you guys to push your citizens so far into a corner and then not be able to take three minutes of their being close to the edge, that's pretty pathetic, I have to say. You guys are not under the same amount of stress as people on this side are. You should be able to withstand three minutes of somebody heatedly talking to you, because that's where you've pushed them. They deserve their time, they deserve to fully express themselves. Do I want everything to get out of control here? No, absolutely not. Nothing would get done, there would be no progress made. But to push somebody out for getting emotional, because that's where you've pushed them to, that's unacceptable. You should be able to handle three little minutes of emotional speak coming from somebody that you've pushed. On a second note, as far as your Dr. Adi Poor making it commonplace and normal, and being proud of it, and almost in a recommending way, saying that masks on kids is perfectly normal, and whenever they come out of the schools, they're not even ripping it off their face, that's a problem. And for you guys to be taking advice from a doctor who thinks that's okay is not okay. We are teaching, you are teaching children that this is a normal reaction to have. This is not the pandemic that we all feared it was going to be months ago, months ago. Are you happy? Are you happy right now? Nobody over here is happy, nobody. And for you guys to listen to a doctor who is propagating it like it's some pro, hey, look at all the kids, they're not ripping their masks off, that's an issue. You should be concerned with that information and with that advice coming from somebody who is making that into a pro. This is ridiculous. I agree. I agree with other speakers. We all understand that you have your minds made up. You got to start thinking outside your little bubble of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We see it, we see what's going on, okay? We know what side you stand on, okay? And I don't know if you know this, but even Democrats hate masks, just in case you had any false conceptions about that. We are tired of it, it is ridiculous. Start thinking for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Hello, my name is Julie Ostran. I live at 1724 North 169th Street. I am very proud to be a fourth-generation Nebraskan. My great-grandparents came over here from Europe, and I was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska. I have five children, one with special needs. All are, they're preschool through junior high age. As adults, we here have the privilege of being able to decide when and where we want to wear our masks based on where we go. But as a mother with school-aged children, I've just got to tell you, I know you've heard the comments, but it is tough for these kids sitting eight hours a day. When my kindergartner started school this year, he was able to not wear his mask at recess, but they changed the rules, and now he literally can only take it off at lunch. And the kindergarten teacher said, "It's very difficult, they can't teach one-on-one, they can't teach in groups." She said, "If I wear a mask and a facial, and sit six feet away, can I teach them?" And the administration said, "No." So the effects on our young kids are pretty, it scares me a little bit as a mom. So my question is, I have looked high and low for one single study, maybe you've seen it, if you've found one, I would love to know what it is, that says there are no adverse effects to long-term mask-wearing. I just can't find one. So if you, or maybe the mayor, or Dr. Poor has access to that study, personally, I would love to see it as a mother, it would make me feel much better. But if you have not found that study, I would just respectfully plead with you to please consider this mask mandate, not to reinstate it, please. And especially for our kids, I would just ask you to please consider them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. Seeing none, Mr. ... Seeing none, Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you, council members. Louis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. This ordinance is not for the council to keep. It's for Dr. Poor to implement a health directive that she was not allowed to enforce because of Governor Pete Ricketts. So I encourage you guys to listen to Dr. Poor very carefully, so she can manage a health directive, which is social distancing and wearing a mask. Because the police might not find somebody for wearing a mask, or the police or law enforcement won't enforce a mask, people wearing a mask does not preclude people from wearing a mask. And so I continue to support Dr. Poor. I've heard some businesses are opening up now that that there's health directives. People are confident of going to work. And that's a good thing. I just also want to share some personal experience through this time, and just say that 2020 has been a very difficult year. But surprisingly, it's been also a very good year for me. And I am happy as an individual. Also, I am wanting to do my part and better myself this year more than I have any time of my life, I think. But there's concerns. There are real concerns about what the mask mandate means and what it's doing. When is it going to be lifted? We all want to take off the masks, our masks. But I think, at this point, I think Dr. Poor is the one to tell us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals wishing to testify on this item on the agenda?
My name is Ford Momarts Brown, 3525 Coming. And I would like to start off by apologizing to the council, particularly the president, for shouting out earlier. It was out of line. I had just gotten very worked up. It's one of my pet peeves, of people claiming constitutional rights, and then quoting something other than the Constitution. I believe the inalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is the Declaration of Independence. And there are no constitutional rights guaranteed by the Declaration of Independence. Principles, yes. Rights, no. But also, I would like to make the statement that I am sick and tired of being told how I can practice my religion as a Jew. My religion requires that when you live in a society or a community, by joining that society or community, you take on a responsibility for every other child of God in that society or community. And if you don't, if you're not a stylite living on top of a pole, or you're not a hermit living in some cave by yourself, then you wear a mask if that's what the community as a whole demands. And yes, there are some Democrats who don't like masks, just like there are some Republicans who do like masks. It all depends on your attitude towards your fellow man. Now, I understand that they are awkward. They are uncomfortable. But that's part of your responsibility to the community in which you elect to live. And I'm not saying anything is wrong or evil about those people who don't like the idea. But there is no constitutional right to disregard or neglect the welfare or the well-being of your fellow citizens. So it makes no difference to me. I find these bothersome, too. And after a while, they get smelly. But I just spray some air freshener on them and go on with it. So it makes no difference to me whether you extend this or not. But I don't think that anti-scientists should be teaching science. I think you guys have done the research, and you should be listening to scientists and people who have studied and practiced and hold a current medical degree to do what is best for your constituents. And somebody told you that you should think for yourselves? No, that's not your job. You got elected and paid for thinking for your constituents.
Your time's expired.
Thank you.
The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. President, I'll just have a couple of quick things to say. I was going to say more next week, and I will, but I wanted to just address a couple of things quickly. One, Ms. Scholes, thanks for coming down here. I'm going to plan to reintroduce that amendment next week. Secondly, I wish Dr. Merritt were still here, because and kind of dovetailing on what Mr. Brown just said, listening to scientists, there are, science is split. There are not, it's not all on one side. They have different opinions on the effectiveness of masks. And what Dr. Merritt had talked about was something that I've been reading a little bit about when we're talking about the size of the virus, and whether or not something like this, or what Councilmember Melton or others have on, provide any protection against the size of this virus. But I'll have, I guess I'll have more on that last week, or next week. One other thing, I said this at the beginning of this, to people who aren't wearing masks, the people who confront them, be respectful, be responsible. There may be a reason that they're not wearing a mask, and that's not necessarily your business. The last thing. Dr. Poor mentioned the positivity number from last week. I find it interesting that she comes in this week and tells us about the positivity rating, or positivity rate last week. Didn't say that in weeks previous when it went up. But I will tell you, in the seven weeks that this mask mandate has been in place compared to the seven weeks prior, the number's gone up. I'll have more to say next week.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll keep it brief as well. But Dr. Adi Poor, you're here. Would you like to come down for a minute for a couple of questions?
Adi Poor, Douglas County Health Department, 111 South 41st Street.
Thanks for coming down. With all due respect, a few weeks ago, I made it perfectly clear that this is not our job. This is your job. You chose not to act upon it, and that's fine. I mean, your job's your job. Our job is our job. So let me ask you, with where the numbers were, say last week, or say a month ago, to where the numbers will be in a week or so, do you feel that you will have to take it upon yourself, looking at the numbers, to implement this mandate without us being involved?
You know, Councilman, as I said before, the governor feels very strongly that I don't have the authority. So I'm not going to go down that route. And I think I said that from the beginning. I need to focus on this community and this community's health, and cannot be caught up in legal matters at this time. So we know that you have the authority, and as in many communities nationwide, city councils have taken these mandates on, so it is not unusual. So that's just what I would say to you.
Well, I would say that I know you've had discussions with our law department, and I know the law department has made it perfectly clear that they would stand behind you and support you, and be able to back you on you as the Douglas County Health Director enforcing this mask mandate. So you being worried about the governor? I don't buy that.
There were legal discussions in that meeting. That's all I can say.
Well, I would ask Bernard, but I don't know that he was in that meeting, so that wouldn't be fair. And I mean, this is with all due respect, but you have to keep in mind, us as elected officials, we've got some very smart people up here, but there's no medical doctors. This was forced upon us because the job was not done before. I know we have letters from businesses. We have letters from schools. And everybody has their own personal choice to wear a mask or not. I don't think the Omaha Police Department has issued a citation to anybody. And I don't know, but I don't think they have.
Correct. They have not.
So when we hear about being told to do something or forced to do something, there may be certain businesses that choose to not sell you something. And I know we have this in front of us to ask, because there's a certain percentage of people that I truly believe we're protecting. There's some that it's just not going to matter, and there's some that aren't going to wear a mask. And I have them in my family, and I don't care. If they don't want to wear a mask, don't wear a mask. But I am coming to the point where I'm not going to continue to vote for something when it's your job. And I just want you to pay attention to the numbers, and I'll have more to say. Thank you, Dr. Adi Poor. When people tell us to pay attention, we are. We're not scientists. We listen to our constituents. I have said this here before. I've said it on the radio. I've said it in different meetings. I listen to my constituents. We each represent a district. My district has various jobs, closed quarters, that they have to put protections in place to stay open. I don't know about the other districts. I know about my district. I've been on the tours to the facilities that have 800 employees, and 80% of them live in 68107. That's just not a zip code in District 4. That's the zip code I live in. These are hotspots. This is a business that was closed. They're open now, and not just because of the mask, but it is a part of it. So there shouldn't be this divide of and especially the thing of your party. I have never went anywhere and said, "What party are you with? Do you believe in a mask?" I don't buy that. That's not the way this works. I appreciated the emergency ordinance a little more, because it had an end date that we could decide on. Because the way this is structured now, and believe me, I choose to wear a mask. There's many times in my day where I'm not affected. When I'm in my car, I don't wear one. If I go into the gas station, sure, I'll put one on, so what? But half the time, I have to run back to my car to get it, because I forgot it. But I still put it on. Isn't it inconvenience? No. And there's that also, that part of, well, 99%. And we go back to my district, Omaha South High is in my district, the largest high school in Nebraska. So if you have 3,000 kids in a high school, and you say, "Well, it's only going to affect, you know, that one person out of 100." Well, go ahead and line up them 3,000 kids, and tell me which one of them kids you want sick. That's 30 kids. Who's going to pick the 30 kids who get sick? And then if you pick that school in my district, how many of them 30 kids actually have health insurance if they were to get sick? It's not just we're doing this to make anybody uncomfortable. There's some underlying issues for each one of us in our districts. It's the kids. It's the schools. I don't not only have the largest high school, I have the largest elementary. And I think I have the largest middle school, all within a one-mile radius of where I live. Sure, it's an inconvenience. I have a lot of kids myself. They haven't seen their friends. They hate it. OPS is going back to school. Other districts that are back, that's great. They're moving along, and maybe the numbers are people are saying, "Well, the masks don't work because the numbers are the same." No, it's because everybody was sheltered in place. They're slowly integrating back into the public. But there's 54,000 kids, and there's 9,000 staff. And if you put that back to the people, if you take the students, and you take the staff, and you take them students' homes, in a majority are in my district, you have over a quarter of the population of the city of Omaha that aren't in general circulation, at least to where it was before. Think about that. Does the mask work? It helps. Does it solve all the problems? Is it going to stop everything from happening? No, not at all. If I'm wrong from listening to my constituents, then there's some inconvenience, and I'm just going to say it. There's some inconvenience. But if I'm right, and the mask helps, and we help from a lot of people getting sick, I won't even say dying, but I'll say being sick, then it was worth it. Again, I am one of seven votes on this council. I will defend my vote on this as long as I have to make it, but I am nearing towards the end. Because once OPS is back in school, and we see how the numbers go, I may have a different opinion for my constituents, and that's what I'm always going to go by. There's science on this side. You can look at science on this side. We could all put whatever numbers we want. It's the most ridiculous thing in the world. I've never looked at the science or data because it's not my job. My job's to list on my constituents. And until they tell me otherwise, this is the way I'm going to be. And it's not because I'm not listening. Trust me. I'm on my own course of what I got going on, so anybody that says, "Wake up," or "Figure out what's going on," oh, trust me, I'm very well aware. Dr. Poor, I would ask you, if you think we need a mask mandate, you make the choice. Don't make us do it. It's not our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Dr. Poor, I hope you're going to be here next week, because that's when I next week is when I plan to have all of my questions for you. I know it's getting late this evening, but I just wanted to make sure you're coming back tomorrow.
You said, "Don't." She won't be here, she said.
You're not going to be here next week for our vote?
Unfortunately.
Wow. Well, then I guess, come up. I don't have my questions for you today. I was planning to ask them next week. Could you please come back to the podium?
Yes, absolutely. Adi Poor, Douglas County Health Department.
Well, we have a vote on a mask mandate, and apparently you would pass the mask mandate, and you're the head of our
Well, I thought you had a public hearing today, and that's when I was going to be here for answering questions or so on. I didn't know, and this was organized a long time ago, so I'm sorry. But I can have one of my other staff here if you want to.
Well, yeah, have somebody that can answer questions, such as when does it end? When will, can we go into like a phase, like, you know, the governor did phases? Can we
And I'm going to take it off, because I'm talking. Can we go into phases? You know, like, maybe we could start out with, kids under 10 don't have to wear a mask, and then we could go to maybe Phase 2, and maybe we could exempt you know, nonprofits or organizations who wanted that. Sorry, right there. Sorry, just wanted I mean, could we do some phases, as opposed to all or nothing, so that because, by the way, I actually have to say, Dr. Poor, when you said, "I went to school and saw all the kids, and they just love them so much, they kept their mask on after they got out and were walking home." I mean, first of all, I have a 13-year-old and some nieces and nephews, and no, as soon as they're done with school, they whip those things off. It is really difficult for them to wear those all day long. We're fortunate, and I think in our school, that they do give the kids mask breaks. But no, I want my child to be breathing in fresh air. That's good for him. I don't want him wearing a mask while walking home alone after school. It's about as stupid as wearing it in the car. So I'm glad that you spent one hour in a school and thought all 1,000 kids were unkey-dory with it. They're not. And it's really affecting how they learn. It's really affecting their daily process, so maybe we could think about doing some phases. And that's what I would appreciate, as opposed to try and turn this around and make it look like the people in this room are just crazy, and if they would just wear a mask for eight hours, they'd they'd get used to it, and maybe they would just wear it even when they are by themselves, because they've decided it's just so great to breathe in their own... Their own. And Dr. Pore, listen, I've always been a big supporter of you, sent you an email telling you that I would have supported you had you done the mandate, if that's what you thought, I would have legally supported your right to do that, in my opinion. Not that I would support the mask mandate, that's something completely different. But the authority as written right now, I do believe you have it. Now it's with the council, and I think at some point it needs to end, and I'm not sure if the council's listening to you to tell them when to end it, or if we're going to tell you when we want it ended. And I guess I don't know who's making the call, so I think the council's just going to keep putting a mask mandate up. So I guarantee you, we're going to see one two weeks from now, will be on our agenda, because it's going to have to be on our agenda in October in order to extend the November 24th mandate. And I haven't heard anyone on this council saying, "No, we absolutely think November 24th is the right date." Because I don't know who's... I don't know, and nobody on the council who's for it has really told me. "No, Amy, I'm not going to continue to have the mandate every three weeks or whatever for us to vote on until I see this." And when you say 5%, I don't want to hear 5%. If our tests go to 100, and six people test positive, then we have a 6% rate, and yet only six people who maybe had no symptoms tested positive. So that percentage, I don't want to hear. Is there something other than the percentage which can be manipulated?
You know, let me just say a few things, because you actually said quite a few things. First of all, what I observed in school is what I observed. That may be different than what you are observing. So what I shared with you is what I saw watching these kids that afternoon. The superintendent was standing next to me, and he said, "Look at this, can you believe this?" I said, "No, I couldn't really." So I'm sure everybody has a different experience. We also asked, when we went around and we asked the students, and I tell you, myself, as everybody else in this community wants children to be in school, that's number one. We heard mental health, it's number one for children to be in school. Every classroom I went into, the kids would say, "We love to be back to school." We have adjusted the direct health measures with the governor across the state of Nebraska to be a little bit more uniform, and so we are giving credit to wearing masks. So even if a case is wearing a mask and everybody around them wears a mask, they are not going to be in quarantine, they are going to be self-monitoring. So really trying to see, and that actually goes a little bit in the direction that you are suggesting, can we go a little bit in phases? And I have gone and agreed to this, because it was different than what we had before, because I looked at the data for the first four weeks. And I saw from the data, we had 1,100 individuals that were in quarantine, and of those, only three of those came home, were affected by COVID, by transmission in the classroom. So that told me that we could kind of step back, and that's why we thought self-monitoring, because we do know how important it is to keep these children. So I would say to you, I'm very open-minded, and I'm looking at data all the time, very much aware of what mental health effect there is and so on. You know, the question of when can we lift this, I think you should listen to the experts, and there are many experts.
But Dr. Pore, you've got experts on both sides, I just listened to two hours of experts that gave it down in Florida, I'm not sure if you've listened to them either.
Well, so, okay, so you're going to laugh at those experts because you disagree with them. So don't tell me to listen to the experts, because we have experts on both sides on whether or not. Dr. Fauci at one point said, "No, don't wear masks," and then he came back and said, "Wear masks." President Trump actually came out and said, "Everybody should just tie scarves around their face," right? And then everybody laughed at President Trump, that was early on in March, just tying scarves around. He said, "Just whatever you can find around, you should tie it around," and everybody made fun of him, right?
So now it's, now we're flipped, now you've got, "Oh, no, masks, you absolutely have to wear masks." So I want to know, you are our expert, so if you're listening to somebody, please tell me who your expert that you're listening to is, and then tell me what the metrics is in which you're going to say that no more masks have to be mandated. You can recommend masks, you don't have to mandate masks. Do you see?
You had the experts sitting here last time from the medical center. They told you, you had the experts right here.
Okay, no, so I'm asking you, is that the expert you're listening to? It's UNMC?
Yes.
Okay, so what does, is it Dr. Rupp that you're listening to?
It's Dr. Rupp.
So what's the metrics to where you don't have to have a mask mandate? There's a difference between a mandate and recommendations. If you can't give me a figure in which to say, "Listen, all you people that don't want to do this, here's a light at the end of the tunnel, here's our end goal." And I kind of think everybody wants that. I don't know too many people that say, "You know what, I'm good just wearing the mask for the next year just because somebody says to." I think people want to know what the number is that we have to get to and what it's based on.
But I have to tell you, too, metrics are difficult, and all those individuals will tell you right away that the metrics are not correct.
Okay, I would like to know what the metrics are, I want to know what the metrics are. And then maybe I can seek it out and I can look myself, maybe they are correct, I don't know. But tell me what you're basing it on, so that I know when I don't have to expect to be mandated to wear a mask. I do wear a mask out of respect for others, even though I don't think it works. I'm going to wear it because, oh, well, maybe I'm wrong, so I'll err on the side of caution. I don't feel that I should have to mandate other people, I think it's an overreach of government, and I think that you should make recommendations, and the good people in Nebraska, if they can, will do it. I know you say, "No, maybe they won't." Okay, well, they're free not to, this is America. So let us people who want our freedom back know what's the number that we can anticipate getting our freedom back.
And I told you 5%, and you said you don't want to hear 5% anymore.
So it's 5% of the total, it doesn't matter how many tests are done.
It's World Health Organization is recommending 5% positivity rate.
So you're following the World Health Organization or UNMC? Both?
I'm sure they would tell you the same thing, but it's also case numbers, we can talk about this, but it's not going to be... Well, if you want me, I can come forward with a proposal and metrics, but I told you, I told you last time.
But if we get to 5%, then no more mask mandate, that's it, it's done?
No, well, then it depends on how long is it, is this just today?
You know what?
You see, that's why I'm saying, I'm saying...
Dr. Pore, it's fine, and I don't need to...
Councilman Melton, it's not easy, I understand.
If you're going to do something that much, you should at least have something other than just a 5%.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do think we need to be careful, whether you're for or against is not the issue, but if we start putting amendments on that we're going to... Certain segments, we're going to say, "Okay, nonprofits." Okay, who's going to decide which nonprofits? Or if we're going to go to, like it was happening the last time, private schools. Well, which private schools? Why are the private schools different than public schools? I just think we had to really be careful, and that's why, Dr. Pore, we do need more direction from you. And I know it seems like we're putting it all on your back, but we're willing, we're willing to make this work. Because I'm not sitting up here just having lots of fun, talking about, or having people angry at me. It's not my goal in life, but I do think we have to be careful, because if we start... Then where do you stop, you're almost like a porcupine. The question I have, and I don't know if you can answer this, or if our good attorney could. Now, can the schools have mask mandate without the city's mandate?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so schools can do it, they don't need us.
Correct.
Okay, the business world, can they do these mandates?
Sure, sure, your private business.
Okay, so, okay, what other group does it that they feel like we're forcing them to do it? But they could do it if they so chose. Basically, everybody could do that. If I'm a small business person, I could do that. See, I think this is what people are saying now, I know before we did this mandate, there were... I don't think schools were involved at the time, but there were businesses out there doing it. I can remember going into Bakers, and, "Oh, it's got to have the mask or IV," or those, or some of those places.
Yep, yep.
And I know they don't want to say, "Councilman, you need your mask on." They're putting the pressure back on us to make that decision, but they truly believe it. And if this is a good idea, I would assume, without our mandate, the schools would probably do it for the most part. Right now, because we set a pattern. I think maybe we needed to do it for a while to set a pattern, to get people accustomed. "Okay, yes, I need to do it, blah, blah, blah." Because like most of us, if we're told, and we practice it a while, we have a tendency, I mean, I know about that's education, practice, and it becomes part of the system. So whether we yay or nay, it can still be there by the choice of the schools and the businesses.
Yes, it can, especially for the schools, it can.
Okay, so now I see, for this, you only need four votes for this to be maintained. If four votes, that's all they get, then the mayor makes the decision, am I right? So to me, it's sort of, you just sort of, you go down the system, maybe the next time there will not be six votes, five, seven, whatever, and you say, "Okay, people are telling us something." Because I think it needs to be larger than just the group of us up here. And I know we're putting a lot of pressure on you, I mean, truly, I commend you, because when people are... I know that as administrator, people throw in darts, they say, "Oh, my goodness, I'm trying to make this thing work." So, and I know from the depth of your heart, you want this to work. But we need more people, like these medical profession, I do get nurses who email me and say, "Hey, this is wrong." But I, and I don't need any more emails, I can assure you, but we need the leadership to be standing up there waving that flag, because as I said, I think somebody else made a comment earlier, we do not have a physician's background up here, up here. You know, I mean...
I agree, thank you.
So I'm just pleading, if you give us some direction, we will follow you, like the lemons, you know, go off the cliff. So I, you know, I'm just trying, give us some direction, you know? Am I trying to make you feel guilty? No. Am I trying to get you to help us? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I find it interesting that we're here considering another extension of the mandate, and we've talked about it numerous times before, about metrics. And we still aren't, I'll say, those that would like to see this passed, I think, to do so, or to ask it, without having proposing any metrics, or even putting metrics on the Florida debate, I find interesting, because to me, that says we have no intention of ending it, because we're just going to keep doing it until whenever. I also find it interesting that, with all due respect, Dr. Pore, I know you're getting beat up on a little bit today, but... Why, I'm not sure, I know we've asked you to give us the reports, but I'm not sure why we're asking for your advice. Because if your advice is that there should be a mandate, you had the authority to do so. And you stand here and you give us advice, but you don't even follow your own advice. And that's a little perplexing to me. Last thing I'll say is, back to the metrics, regardless of the metrics, at least as I see it, it assumes that the mask is the be-all and end-all to get to that metric. And as I alluded to earlier, I have some studies that I was going to talk about next week that bring that into question. Whether, and whether or not the metric is 5% or whatever the number is, it sure seems like some of the numbers I've been hearing are metrics that are less than the influenza rate, positivity rate, number, raw numbers, that we've seen, you know, that we historically see. So again, even if we're talking about the metrics, is it the mask that gets us there? And regardless of the mask or the metrics, at what level is it acceptable? So I hope to have, we'll have some more discussions about this next week. I'm sorry that you won't be here, but I'm sure we'll have some good conversation about it.
So may I just answer one?
Well, just a second, are you finished with your remarks?
I'm finished.
Okay, there's no further lights. Dr. Pore, a couple things before you respond, and I will give you that opportunity, I promise you. Are you available between now and next week to answer questions to things like studies and metrics and things that council members may have that they could contact you and email you and get your answers in advance of the hearing?
Correct, I could also be available by Zoom next week, if that is helpful.
Okay. Now, was there something you wanted to say in response to anything you heard today?
Just in response to what Councilman Harding said in regards to influenza. You know why we are treating this different is, for influenza, we have a vaccine. A vaccine that can be used by those who are vulnerable, or at higher risk, or the elderly. That is what we don't have with COVID-19 at this time, and that's why you are hearing that we have to go into this non-pharmaceutical intervention. And a mask is not everything, it is social distancing, mask, staying home when you are sick, washing your hands. It's all of this together, but those are the tools that we have in the toolbox at this time. I just wanted to make that comment, because I had heard this several times, thank you.
Thank you. With that, the... Oh, I thought it never went off. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I just wanted to respond to that. Then why aren't we mandating social distancing? As I said earlier, too, and again, I refer back to Dr. Merritt's comment, is that this virus is smaller than the influenza virus, and therefore, you know, even at some schools, what I'm wearing right now isn't even allowed. It's ineffective. So, no, I'm just making some general comments, but thank you, I appreciate that. So, again, I, look, I'll choose to wear a mask, and if someone asks me to wear a mask, if I would go into their business, I'd certainly do that. But, again, I don't think the numbers, the seven weeks prior to this going into effect compared to the seven weeks before, and the seven weeks before covers the Fourth of July. So to make, you know, the argument, there's plenty to debate, but to make the argument that this seven-week period included Labor Day, the previous seven-week period included Fourth of July, which I'd probably make an argument that that probably had more social distancing violations than over the Labor Day weekend. But, you know, we could debate this until all hours, and it's getting to that point. But, again, I'll have, I'll bring some more information next week, but, again, regardless of the metric, which we still haven't discussed or agreed upon, it's, how do you, you know, how do you even get to that metric? What is, and I've just heard, you know, Dr. Pore say, "It's a combination of social distancing, washing your hands, and a mask." So we'll have more next week, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you. The only issue that I have with it is, a lot of this discussion must or should be, I should use the word should, should be done before we vote on it next week. If we're going to go in front of the council next week and have this discussion amongst ourselves, I don't know if there's anything to gain by that, other than just prolong. I think what we need to do is make sure that we sit down, those of us who have questions with our leadership, Audi and Dr. Pore, and try to find out those things ahead of time. Because if we just bring this up again, we're just going to continue this circle of information, and I don't know if that... And I, I, I don't know if that's of value other than playing to the audience. I, I really like to get some of these issues, these questions settled as much as possible before the vote. Otherwise, it's, it's a continuation, might as well keep it a, a, the public hearing open, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I, this isn't a discussion, these are questions that we need answers to. And perhaps if any of the other council members who are in favor of this have anything that you would like to add or answer privately, please let me know because I think what I was told today is the information's not available or we don't have it. It's just generally what the experts say. So I, I don't think there is an answer to my questions and that's, that's the problem. So if anybody does have an answer to my questions, please contact me because I would love to hear it and consider it.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I, I'm, I'm just going to be very brief here. We're in a pandemic and the pandemic is going to be over when the pandemic is over. For us, I, I'm listening to the science and I would, and I'm going to listen to Dr. Poor and I'm going to listen to Dr. Rupp. And I would encourage people to read Dr. Ali Khan's book, The Next Pandemic. When you get that kind of information, it's because it is, it is almost impossible in a pandemic to tell you when all of these things that we have put in place are going to be over. Quite frankly, we're still, for a long time, we were stabbing in the dark. We didn't know what it was because we didn't know the characteristics of this pandemic. We still don't know all the characteristics of this pandemic. What we do know is that in what the, what the experts are saying to us, and when I'm talking about experts, we have significant expertise in this city. In fact, I tell people, if you want to get sick, Omaha is the place to get sick. Because we've got people who understand Ebola, we've got people who understand COVID-19, we've got people who have written books on this. And the individuals that are suggesting that we may wear a mask are just not people in Omaha or in this community. We're talking about experts from around the world who are saying the same thing. So for me, I'm not a doctor, nor am I an epidemiologist, nor, and, 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 and quite frankly, the people that do this, my hat is off to them because it takes a significant time to learn this, it takes a significant time to understand it. But as you read like Dr. Ali Khan's book, you know that the next pandemic is coming, you just don't know when and you don't know the characteristics of it. So for us to sit here and attempt to glean from Dr. Poor or anybody else when this is going to be over, I don't know that anybody can give you an answer to that. It's over when it's over. I just don't know how you get past that. And I, and, and if you're going to listen to people, to me, since I don't know this, it would seem logical to me to listen to the people who know it best. Those who are epidemiology, those who, who work with these people every day, who are involved in this on a regular basis, it would seem to me, those would be the people that we would listen to. They are certainly the people that I'm going to listen to. And I'm going to be supportive of a mask mandate next week. People need to understand that because I'm going to follow the science and I'm going to follow the experts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Poor's recommendation, as I remember in speaking for her, so people should have no surprises or questions where I stand is, I believe she wanted a 5% average positivity rate. We're not talking about only 100 cases being done in terms of testing a week. We have thousands upon thousands of tests. We have, we're getting good data. And that's the number that she's recommended, that Dr. Rupp and the infectious disease specialists in Omaha recommended. And those are the recommendations that I'm following. And it shouldn't be any mystery as to what my position on this. And whether I'm in the majority or minority, that's what I've said, that's what I'm saying. Am I open to other ideas? Sure, I'll listen, I'll, I'll listen to what you have to propose. But that's where I stand and I, I, I understand some people are against them. Some people think it's something that should just be recommended. But I think when we have a public health crisis like we have now, that the, the interests of protecting public health in our community is the most important thing that we do. And so if anyone wants to criticize me or, or say I'm an error, whatever, I'd rather err on the side of safety and public health and protecting people than not. And the fact is, that's my position, I'm sticking to it. So, thank you. Councilmember Gray, is your light still on?
No, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd just make a suggestion then, why don't you, why don't you include the metric in your ordinance so that people know what the, the metric is? And if that metric is met, then, then the ordinance goes away.
I, I was thinking the same thing, why don't we just put something like that in? Dr. Poor said she's willing to work on some recommendation language and that, so I'm open to that. If there are any other lights? No further lights?
Non-action items, items 39 through 47 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Council passed 7 to 0, meeting is adjourned at 7:16.